Good morning. The March 30th, 2023 Board Session is now in order. Paul, roll call please.
Mr. Shaden?
Here.
Ms. Wright?
Here.
Mr. Trent?
Here.
Ms. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Jean?
Here.
Please stand for... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just so everybody knows, there's been a couple of last-minute additions to the agenda to include Paul's evaluation process, FSBA dues, superintendent's search for Tuesday, like what we want to talk about and stuff like that, like how you want that process to go, and then policy approvals for meeting. There's some concern around like, hey, we have a bunch of them that we just went through. So there's like 30 or 40 of them. Do we want to put them on the school board agenda? Or do we want to have like a special meeting just to knock them all out? And we'll talk about those things. But first, Ms. Suhann asked if she could have a minute to just kind of introduce herself and kind of go through some stuff. And so, Ms. Hand, the floor is yours.
Thanks. Good morning, everybody. I just thought I'd give you a quick debrief on day one. It's kind of an exciting day yesterday. I had the opportunity to meet with most of the senior leadership team and just kind of reset where we are with them, be finishing that work today. And then I did a leadership team meeting last night and just kind of talked through with the principals where we are. And for me, the three core points that I made are focusing on our core mission. That's going to be our good work for the next eight to 12 weeks. And we have a lot to get done. We have the end of the year, testing's coming up, like we need our principals and our teachers focused on education. So that was point number one. Point number two really relates to budget development. And I think Dr. Cody and Francis did an excellent job providing some data for us at the board meeting. And I'd like to really focus on using that data to develop our investments. And so I asked Dr. Cody to lead a cross-functional team to drill down into the data and figure out, are there places that we really need to be investing our resources that we might not have previously seen? So we'll be looking at that more closely as we develop our budget. And then the third point I wanted to make to our team is that I think we can do a better job of collaboration and coordination between leading and learning and student services. And so I've asked our folks to think about that, and we'll be moving forward with some plans to do that as well. So those are probably the three top-level priorities that I've set for our team from my office, and hopefully everybody's on board with that and will be providing some good work for you in the future. Couple of administrative items. I know you have transportation on your agenda today. We weren't quite ready to present, but I believe Dr. Green and Mr. Wilson have a recommendation prepared. So I believe we'll have a memo today. Carol, is that right?
Yes.
We'll have a recommendation for you today, and that will be on your board agenda, I believe, April 11th for actions. That's our plan. So you should have that underway. And then probably on Tuesday, I'll have an add item for you, just to clean up some administrative items with me. I've asked Russ Cheatham to take over some of the administrative role of the Assistant Superintendent of Facility Services, things like approving purchase recs and signing contracts and things like that that probably should not be concurrent with my role as Acting Superintendent. So Russ is going to handle those in the interim for me, and I'll have a production on Tuesday to just get that cleaned up. So that's all. Thank you, Mr. Susan. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hand. Does anybody else want to speak to Ms. Hand real quick? This just basically gave you like her, hey, I'm here, and this is what I'm planning on doing, so...
I would just like to say thank you again. I mean, from the bottom of my heart, you've set them to a situation that is not maybe necessarily the most ideal, but I think you might be the first female. Is this correct?
Yeah.
I look strong female leadership in here, so we are super proud of you. But honestly, just you're hitting the ground running, and I really, really appreciate how diligent you have been and how hard you have worked. So we're grateful for you.
Just off of that... Oh, I got to be careful. Anybody else? I do, guys, I was talking to Ms. Hand about it, I got to be careful.
Very much appreciate you taking over. And what you just shared with us is, I'm not surprised by any of it. It's the way they operate. You know, we've had a lot of instability, and I can't find, I think, someone who's better able to stabilize this than the person who I've never heard any negative about ever. But you're very professional. I know you have the respect of your colleagues and of people, the leadership team, I'm sure that you met with last night. And so I look forward to trying to make your job easier for these... Don't look surprised. But, you know, these are the three most important things that we do have to do for the next couple of months. So I appreciate the focus on the core mission. I mean, that always has to be number one, getting our, you know, helping our students be successful, supporting our schools in that endeavor. The budget development this time of year has to be, you know, has to be up there. And then this, because the discipline and the other, you know, and then again, going back to core number one, core mission number one, that collaboration, I think, is going to be really, really important, and that's what I'm hearing too. So I appreciate that. I appreciate your use of Dr. Cody to lead that team because that kind of solidifies or clarifies what her role would be. I think it would be a good use of her experience from another district as well. So again, my other word would be to the board. We've had a lot, not just on our plates, but we had a lot that we've put on Dr. Schiller's plates and which reflect on the staff. And considering now that the staff is actually going to be taking on additional burdens, because this woman's role was not small.
Right.
I would encourage us, as we talked this morning, as we go to the coming days, that we maybe lighten, help lighten loads if we can, so that they can do their job with efficiency and excellence the way I know they are, and still be alive at the end of May, and still working for us at the end of May. So I hope that we can just take that into consideration as we move forward. Everything we do creates, not everything, but most things we do creates work for people. And if we can lighten that burden so they can finish strong with these three priorities and others, I think we need to take that into consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Ms. Jenkins, do you have any words?
Yeah. I, of course, appreciate you as well. I feel like you offer or bring back a sense of stability, cohesiveness, and light to this organization and your colleagues, which was necessary. I trust you to not only steer the ship, but first put it back together, because we were very fragmented, very unstable. I feel a very tremendous sense of relief, which is selfish, because your burden has become so much larger very quickly overnight. I recognize that. But I feel a very tremendous sense of relief that you are stepping in, again, to put the ship back together. So I appreciate you. I think you know this, but I'll say it anyway. I am here to support you in any way possible. I know that is the nature of most of our cabinet members, because they're so dedicated to VPS, to do too much sometimes. So I just want to say publicly to you, you know, you literally have two roles right now, one of which that was already too big for one human being to take over, and you did an amazing job doing it. But, you know, make sure you're taking time for yourself as well as this organization so you continue to be as amazing and efficient as you always are. So thank you so much.
Mr. Trent?
Thank you for giving me the time yesterday to sit down and talk. So plenty of what I needed to say was then, but it was a, we can say publicly, the trust word came up, and that's first and foremost, you know, as a former business owner, I would take, I would take the trust over an employee or a businessperson rather than a shewed resume in that area. So, I mean, you're a facilities expert, but we trust you in this position. It is, we're at the two-minute drill, to use that analogy of getting new leadership in this, in this school, so, in this district, and I trust you in that position to get us to the finish line there. But it's not going to be, you've got a lot of work to do. We discussed that yesterday. This is usually, you know, as teachers, testing coordinators, May, the end of the school year, it's tough enough for us to throw this on you. You know, why do you get the big bucks, I guess? No, it's, because you're capable of doing it. That's why you're in this seat right now. So I look forward to the next 50 days or so, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, you guys. Hey, first off, wanted to, I watched a little bit of the board meeting, and I noticed that I was kind of injecting onto every comment, right? And I think there was some validation for that. I think the way that we can get around that, and I'd like to start trying to move to it, is we can all say our opening comments, and then we just kind of leave it open for discussion on bigger items so that, and I will not do it based upon like having this opportunity to discuss, but I think having us say one thing, then say one thing, and then be done, it was kind of off. So we may start trying to move into having our open statements, kind of having a collaboration, have final statements, and then move it on. And if we get to the point where we can, if we keep that organized, then we can do whatever. So I just wanted to let you guys know that. The other thing is, is that Sue and I were talking about her being the first woman, and she was like, it's just, like, I just came here to do a job, right? So she said, whatever you do, I don't think that needs to be the cornerstone of what we talk about. So Megan, you brought it up and I laughed.
This whole entire thing does.
And the reason is...
It absolutely does, especially in an organization like this. Sorry, I didn't mean to jump on that.
No, 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 like, I have four daughters. And one of the things that I have is a very strong wife, and my daughters are all very strong-willed, and I'm so proud of them for doing so. So when I saw the opportunity to say that, I was like, man, this is a great story to tell. And to be honest with you, with a female-dominated profession, to say that our public schools has never had a female superintendent...
Exactly.
...is something that we needed to say, you know what I mean? And sometimes, Ms. Hand, we don't really want things to be out there, but it might be something that I think is appreciated by many, and I think that that's a huge opportunity. And especially because the school board has been a majority of female now for a while, right?
And it's Women's History Month.
And it's, oh my God.
Yes.
Oh my God. Like, maybe this is all part of...
For two minutes. Yeah, yeah, you just made it.
Anyways, I did want to say thank you for some of the clarifications that you brought forward, both with the budget development, the reports and stuff like that. And I did want to reiterate so that applicants that are out there that may be watching, that your intention is to just apply for the interim position and not to try to stay in any future position.
Yeah.
Right. You and I, like, to be honest with you, it was...
I'm sorry, perhaps that was too...
Yes, sir, that is correct. I love it.
And just so everybody knows, that has been the sentiment for many people have always said to me, why don't you ever, even when Dr. Mullins was here, like, hey, when Dr. Mullins is done, why don't you have Suhann? Everybody loves her so much. So throughout the time period that we've been together, I've always said, hey, have you ever thought about it? And she's like, no, no, there hasn't even been an opportunity that she has said, well, maybe. Like, no, 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 no. And that makes you such a good leader, in that you are focused on what is at hand, not rather than some position that's up there. So thank you so much, Ms. Hand. With that, I wanted to speak to, is everybody okay with that? We can move on from here? With that, I'd like to move to Paul's evaluation. Ms. Tammy, did you want to kind of speak to what you were, what you put it on here for?
Well, you have copies of this existing evaluation tool. I kind of wanted to get the approval.
I don't.
No, no, I have them from out. I wasn't interested in addressing these topics. I thought...
Yeah. So you want me to...
Yeah, just hand them out. I really just wanted to see if it's approved or reused again this year, so I can send it to Paul so we can get started on the self-evaluation. Paul, I discussed maybe a June timeline to submit it to the board consistently, wanting to fill in the superintendent's evaluation. So, but I just don't want to wait too long so Paul has a chance to work on his self-evaluation.
So basically, there's a structure that we do it by, and she's just saying, hey, we may not do it right now, but we need to kind of say, this is how we want to do it, to give you the opportunity that if there's any changes, that we would do it. And I think that's appropriate for right now. If you take a look at it, it's a lot like we do for the superintendent's evaluation. We have categories and everything else. So I think that one of the things that Paul and I had spoken about was that with the changing over of the guard and doing all the stuff, we had said that we wanted to kind of delay where we normally would do his evaluation, because it's not due until, like, when is it due?
My contract is required an annual, so it's due whenever the board wants. Last year, we were on the renewal timeframe because my contract ended in June. This year, that isn't an issue, so it's really, the board's prerogative. If you want to wait a little later until the new superintendent's here and in place, we can do that. I think Tammy just wants the advice approved, so she can start getting it to me, let me start working on my self-evaluation, and then the board can schedule when they want to go through their process.
So we talked about this yesterday, because I knew this was around the time of year, April, May, when we have done it before, but considering what April, May are right now, I think it's, but we also usually in the summer are doing the superintendent's, and we won't be doing that this year, because, you know, they won't have been with us for a year. I think the summer will be a freer time for us to take our time to do this, but I'm not ready to, because, I mean, I've seen this before, but I would like our new board members to take a look at it. So what timeframe do you...
How far down for whatever? It's just as long as it's in your head to give me the, maybe next meeting, it could be a discussion or something, and just...
Is, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'll just say, if we can kind of get a timeframe, hey, over the next, well, I guess it's almost a week and a half before our next workshop, can everybody look at this and make any suggestions for changes? That's what you're...
And I have to email to you as well, so you know what I'm trying to version?
Yeah, no, that, I think that's a good...
I was thinking just to send it to Paul, I mean, Paul, I like, to grow, he did end of April, so that he can start working on it to get it like to you by the end of May for a petition.
So we have a time period where you guys look at it and see if there's any changes you want, but as far as the approval of the actual evaluation processes, now that's pretty simple, right? That's something we can approve today. Then the edits will be in the future. Like, this evaluation form is what she's looking for, is this what we want? Then we can let her do that and then make any changes in the next couple of weeks, I think is appropriate. But Ms. Jenkins?
Yeah, no, I'm fine with it. I think that Gina and Megan need time to look at it, because I feel like last time we went over it, not to say that we won't review it again and have changes we want, but we kind of expressed some changes we wanted to, the actual document itself, so I think that's probably going to be reflected already.
I think so. Anybody else have anything to say?
Can I ask a question? Are the changes that you reflected last time, are they showing in this evaluation form now or no?
I don't know.
Well, we didn't want to change the evaluation midstream.
Right.
But do you have notes of this, Tammy, or a couple?
I'll have to look at this. I have already a newborn field. I'll have to look and see if there's any changes. I don't recall on here very often, but...
I feel like it was more, we had this conversation probably for the superintendent one. I don't really remember doing it.
Yeah, I think Paul's was really a quick, easy eval.
Oh, yeah. They were done a length of time. Yeah. I don't think there were a lot of discussion about changing, and if it was, it was like semantics. It wasn't major.
Right.
Everybody good?
And it's just reflective of how our teachers and other employees are evaluated with the highly predictive effective, you know, so it's...
And it's consistent with Dr. Mullins for the superintendent evaluation.
Yep. And the board evaluation, which is something we get to do that, too.
Yeah, we'll talk about that. So Paul, as I gave you a little bit of direction, we're going to kind of approve the process, document, and then maybe change a couple of things. Maybe if we can, I think, your recommendation of like a week and a half of that workshop, or we can just kind of say, hey, have we made any changes? And I truly believe that there are some changes that if you guys can submit prior to the meeting, that we can, you know what I mean, using Tammy's evaluate that thing so that we can have Paul set.
So we need to get him to her beforehand, so then she can have him ready for us.
So like, there's that link that you can go online and say, hey, section one, this, you know what I mean? Just do that real quick. That way we can have a setup, and then we can communicate, and everybody will be on the same page, and we can move. I think that would help us move into the process.
Probably be helpful to describe the process as we get there. You know, Paul gets it for a while. He gets time to provide evidence to us. He provides a binder with, here's, here's the evidence, because we don't always see all the things that he's doing. Here's the evidence that I've met this, this, and this, and evaluates himself, and then he presents it to us. We get a certain amount of time to look over it, and then Tammy sends us with the smart sheet, you know, for us to put our scoring in there, and then any justification or reasoning behind, or support from the evidence we have from what he's given us or whatever. And then we come together for usually two meetings, one if we need them. I know we usually schedule two.
Yeah, I think just one is sufficient.
One, okay, because it was really short. And we kind of hammer out, come to some agreement, get it all in there, and we write kind of a, it's collective creative writing, you know, so we can, and then we pull him in to present it to him in that afternoon timeframe. So that's just what it usually looks like, I think, you know.
Your recommendation might be the most insane recommendation ever made by an attorney in the history of the Florida Department of Education because of some of the interesting things that have happened over the last year. So I look forward to seeing it. Is that good? Everybody understand?
Yeah.
Okay. There's one little supplemental thing that goes on here. One of the things that we identified as a possible problem was that Dr. Schiller had previously moved to have the Assistant Attorney for the District move to be the superintendent's personal attorney, and that was the one that we were trying to approve. I talked to Dr. Herb, Ms. Hand, and she said she would support us very passionately to move it back to being the Assistant General Counsel for you, Paul, to review and stuff like that. So if everybody's okay with that, I don't know if you guys know, but there was a, on February, I think it was like the 24th or somewhere in there, 14th to the 24th, I can't remember the date, he changed the description.
We approved it.
We did, we did. He moved it to something else. The recommendation would be to move it back to being where it supports Paul and stuff like that. And Sue had said that was something, yeah.
So is that something that she's going to have to put for us to vote, correct?
Yeah, because we approved the change to the...
Yeah, the job description will have to change.
Yep. She has to, yeah, she has to go back, change the job description back to what it was, collaborate with you, and then come back to the board sometime.
The duties were always on there for representing the superintendent on conflict matters like employment and expulsions that I can advise on. So that was always built in. He just wanted the structure to be there where they were in the superintendent's office rather than under legal, helping out with the district's general legal stuff.
Yep. So it's okay.
So I think just the history of that is important. I mean, the role was going to be the same, and it just, you know, I'll give an example. The year that we were at impasse, our attorney at the time was not Paul, had to represent the board, and the attorney for the district had to be separate, because we were sitting in our quasi-judicial, so we had to hire outside counsel to do that. Having, which we might still, we still have power outside counsel, because sometimes it's easy too much for two attorneys. But if there is that, you know, it was really important to have that person. In the meantime, she, the person that'd be hired, worked hand-in-hand with Paul in things that we needed all, we were all working together. But, so I, we changed it. I didn't see as much of a conflict, but it clearly, you know, it's, we can, we as a board can change our minds, so we need to approve. My question is, we had someone that we have not approved yet. Would that affect that, would that need to be delayed until we change the job description?
I don't know that it has to be delayed as much. I mean, Sue, right now, they would report to Sue, she can assign them whatever she wants in the interim.
Okay. Because we do change job descriptions sometimes for people who are already working for us, because it doesn't match their, what they're actually doing. So I just wanted to make sure, and you have to answer that question before we move forward.
So everybody's okay with them developing it, bringing it back to us? Ready to go?
Yeah. I'm okay with that. I think that, well, it makes sense to have that counsel in the legal offices, and especially when we're talking about hiring somebody new that could need additional training, having that person sitting in the superintendent's office when they're going to clearly need Paul's advice and guidance for this process, makes sense to have that all kind of grouped together. With the nature of what's happening, it makes sense to me. I can't see a reason why we would say no, but maybe somebody else can.
No, I think, I think the, I'm sorry, go ahead. I think the idea was that Dr. Schiller had come to us and said, hey, in order to need a, you know, work as the superintendent, these are some of the requests that I have. He's in a difficult situation, so going back to what we had originally, a good opportunity.
I just want to jump in here. I don't want to discuss it right now, because it's not literally applicable to this, but it's kind of in this realm of a conversation. There is something I want to talk about at the end that has to do with a little bit of that reworking as well, but I'd rather do it after we're done with everything.
Okay.
I just wanted to put that up there.
All right. I think we have direction. Ms. Sue, do you need any other? Okay. Next one is, is that there's a, Ms. Tammy had brought this to me this morning, saying, hey, she needs some direction, even though we don't have to pay for it until July 1st, she would like some direction on FSBA. So you guys may not know or may know, we have a voluntary, as individuals, we can choose not to be a part of FSBA. In the event that you are not choose to be a part of that, that money would then become a part of your disposable income for various things that we can discuss later on, what that direction is, but it's up to you guys. So I think Ms. Tammy had said, hey, if there's a way that we can get direction now, if not, you guys can think about it and evolve with it. But I think we should honor her with that discussion. So with that, anybody want to open the floor to discuss things?
Yeah, I mean, I'll be super fast. I don't want a membership to FSBA. And I appreciate you bringing this up, because I randomly keep asking you when, I don't want it to automatically get renewed, so I would appreciate not doing that. Thank you.
I think one of the things is that there are a lot of organizations that we should be a part of that are beneficial to school boards and their growth and development. So when I see our budget, I feel like a big chunk of the money is spent at FSBA. So is there anything that would stop, hey, you pick an organization that you want to be part of, bring back the information you learned, you pick an organization that you, and then collaboratively, we come together and say, we're getting the information from all these organizations that are helpful for our school board, versus all of us being a part of one same organization with the same information?
I think there's something that there has to be, with FS, and you guys know this better, but I think FSBA has a thing that there has to be a majority for, right? There's a majority of board members that are participants for something, and you're going to know more about that, Ms. Campbell.
If I could speak to you real quick, not to interject, but there was a question, the way we set it up before was that for past preference, Ms. Deskovic and I both were members of FSBA, and then we also were members of the new coalition that had formed. And under the current guidelines and stuff like that, in the event that you wanted to be a part of multiple ones, we were not going to restrict that, so that there's budgetary, we had it inside the budget to be a part of.
We made the budget in there so that you can be a part of.
Right. And not only that, but there was the conversation wrapped around, look, in the event, you're to your point of effectiveness of leadership, it should not only be in one, right? So the idea was is to grow that. So with that, I just wanted you to know that it's not like you, if you don't choose the FSBA, that you go over here, and then you can't choose another. No, like, that's not part of the provision. So with that, I just wanted to get it back to you.
And I, you know, I would draw everyone's attention down to the bullet points in the middle, and I will tell you, whether or not, use them or not, I have definitely used them. I know Mr. Susan has at times, too.
Without a doubt.
The first bullet point being the most important on call, if I text Andrea Lucina or Tina Pinkerson or, you know, Carol Cook, who's not a direct employee, but she's a consultant with them, the one who has come out and done, so she did your new board member training, and she did our master board training, if I text any of them at any time, oh my gosh, this is going on, you know, I have always gotten, she will, none of them will tell you what to do, but with their vast experience, you know, and what's going on, they will tell you, well, in such and such a county, this is what they did, and this in such and such a county, this is what they did, and this is how it turned out, you might wanna think about this. And, and in such a non, let me just say, nonpartisan way, there's, it's a point where there's people now like, I don't know what party they're in, I don't, you know, just, they've just given us good historic counsel, especially in situations that other counties may have dealt with, but I didn't, you know, we haven't, so I don't know. That is, I, I get a call back always the same day, or a text, hey, let's, let's touch base tomorrow. It has been invaluable. And that experience, as well as connecting with other people across the state, I know you guys have probably built relationships with school board members across the state who are also new, but you know, you do have an automatic connection with, with people across the state. You know, you may not read the, the emails that come through or the magazines that come, but they've been, you know, different times when I've wanted them, you know, they're, they're at my fingertips and, and as well as the legislative. Yeah, I will just tell you this, and I'm sorry if I go along, but this is an important decision to make, and I, and it's, I don't know where we're gonna go with this, but I will answer your question if I wanna get to them. Don't let me forget. You know, I just was in Tallahassee over spring break at FSBA Day in the Legislature. And, you know, we had people there who, from the right and the left, you know, and people, I will give you an example, Kim Amontri, who is in Charlotte County, is one of the chairman of the legislative, of the advocacy, the legislative committee. And they have the Herculean task of taking people who come from a great variety of backgrounds, political backgrounds and educational backgrounds and different, all, you know, north to south and beach to center and all that stuff, and try to figure out, what, what can we all agree on? And if you look at the FSBA platform, there were things that most people could all agree on, workforce, mental health, security, recruitment, adult, you know, getting our kids, like career readiness, things like that. They left off the things that we didn't agree on. In fact, they left off things like term limits for school board members because not everybody in the organization agrees on that. And some people were upset about that, like, look, we have to stick with what we can agree on, and there was a lot that we could agree on. And so then, being able to go collectively to our legislators and say, here's what we'd like to see, and in a very respectful way. I know in the past, before I got on the board, before I got a part of FSBA, I think right around the time that Mr. Susan got on, there was a rift between FSBA and the Legislature because they made some bad choices. They have definitely, the people were still around this part of the organization, learned the lesson. A lot of people actually aren't still around on school boards. But that is helpful. I actually had forgotten about the $100,000 death insurance policy. But, you know, we have a new national organization that we're a part of, COSPA, which is having their conference, it's actually today.
I'm going there tomorrow.
Are you? Okay, I, I'm not because of the All County Jazz Concert, I have other organizations, but, you know, we get, because we're part of that, we get to be a part of this new organization that's uniting states around things that aren't political, which our old organization, NSBA, tended to, it wasn't just political, it was, they were, they were a hot mess administratively is one of the biggest reasons why we left. I will tell you this on the, just to answer Ms. Jenkins' question, I have to, I don't have the policy in front of me, FSBA policy, even though I've been on the Board of Directors when we voted, we refined it. If we don't have three members of our board, and I don't mean this in a coercive way, but if we don't have three members of our board that are part of FSBA, we do lose our seat at the table. I mean, any of us can join, if we get down to, I'm the only person, I intend to join. If I'm the only person from our board that stays a part of FSBA, I will still be, but I lose my seat in the Board of Directors, which means we lose our voice in that organization, and that's fine, I'm not trying to keep my, I, I feel like I've had an important role to play, I would like to continue to serve. It's, we have to decide this summer if I'm gonna be a representative, and I certainly offer myself to do that again. It's been fun, even though it's required a lot more travel. And it's helped me to build relationships and get to know my job even better here. But we do lose our seat up on the table, we, at least, I think we lose it for Board of Directors, we also lose it for the Advocacy Committee because every county gets one voice on the Advocacy Committee, but if we don't have a majority of members, we do lose that. I do know you revised that policy. So just something to think about, you know, I know several of you have gotten a chance to, you guys have gotten at least to do the new board member training, there's the finance training, which is very helpful. I've suggested to you, and I continue to suggest, if you remain members, that you take advantage of the policy, if they do a one day on policies and one day on collective bargaining, they do that in September, it's really, unfortunately, it'll be after our collective bargaining process will probably be completed. But it's very, very helpful. The Finance 2.0 is in April, again, because we're going through budget, it's very helpful trainings. Have taken advantage of everything that I can, we can't do everything, but tried to, and everything I've attended has been very helpful. And, and it is, it's, it's kinda like this job. It is what you make it. If you're not going to attend, and I, you know, she's not going to attend, and I hated that she came in during the pandemic year and didn't get a full new board member training because I think that had, my opinion is had an effect, because you had the do years virtual that year because it was 2020. You know, I will continue to have relationships, like I said, I'm gonna continue to be a part, but I think it's helpful for our board to have this. You know, the reason why we can come to them and ask for their assistance to help us find our next superintendent is because we are, our board is a member, and if we were not a majority board, we wouldn't have, I'm not saying we wanna use them again for that, hopefully we won't in the near future. But the reason why we can take advantage of that vast experience in Florida and out is because we're a member, we have majority membership. And so just, just something to think about as you guys make your decision. But, you know, my, my decision is I will be rejoining regardless, but it does, it does affect what our district can do with them if we don't have at least three.
Thank you very much. Ms. Megan?
I, I think you could do commercials for FSBA. On all the things that you have wonderful to say. And again, when I, my comments are not reflective of saying, hey, I don't think FSBA is a useful organization that's beneficial to us. I don't, I don't think that way, I don't feel that way. But my, where my issue comes in is there are other organizations that I'm interested in being a part of, and if I'm being quite frank, majority of our board budget for each individual member is tied to that membership with FSBA, like a huge percentage of it. So if I have to choose one or the other, and there might even, there's value in both of them, so that's where I, I get a little conflicted on this. So do we need to give direction today to Tammy on whether or not-
You don't have to.
All right, I would like to know the details on the board majority and, you know, does it need to be three of us, is that a certain thing, before we move forward with the decision? Again, this is nothing against FSBA, it's just if it, if it's one or the other.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we did, I don't know, if you're wanting to be a part of the new conservative, I forget all the initials.
For a conservative coalition of school board members.
That one. I knew there was a couple of Cs in there.
Is it the same as the, that sounds pretty close to the other.
They are, they were conservative.
It is the same.
There's another C.
But if you wanna be a part of that, I don't know what their dues are going to be or if they presented that because they did kind of die for a few years.
Let's, let's, let's-
What we had budgeted previously, and FSBA did just have to raise their dues by like a 2% this year, for the first time in, I don't know if it was 10 or 15 years. It's been a long time. We voted on that in December.
Right, I remember, I was there.
But it was very small. We did budget as a board, our, our budget to, so that you could be a part of FSBA and that organization. And our, our amount was the same. So, I mean, it was for everybody, not everybody, not everybody used it, so, you know, we had left, extra leftover, but, you know, we've been flexible, too, because, you know, if somebody on the board doesn't really wanna be a part of anything, we've shuffled around. Because I've had to do all the extra travel, I've taken from Cheryl's before, from Dunfermline before, or they have taken from mine, you know, one year, Missy went to the national conference and we didn't have that budgeted, but somebody had extra, so we've been able to share that around for people who want to do extra stuff, but I'm happy with it.
Yeah, and I, just to, like, slightly expand on my decision, I mean, and I'm not gonna put out all the reasons why, because I don't need to, there's more reason to say that, but I did take advantage of some of those trainings, that finance training is super helpful. It was really, really helpful as a new school board member, both of them. I mean, 2.0 is like way deeper of a dive than the first one. But you said it perfectly, I know I'm not going to take advantage of anything that would be offered for that amount of money and spending, and so that's why I'm making that decision. I've already had an opportunity to experience it for two years, and I know I'm not going to utilize it. And so I'm just doing that because I think it's fiscally responsible of me to say that if I know I'm not gonna participate in the value of it. And thank you, Katie, because I was gonna tap on you specifically to address to the new board members. By the way, though, there is ramifications if there isn't a majority of people participating in it. So that's a decision that you guys definitely have to weigh.
Ms. Jenkins?
Yeah, I'm gonna take some more time to look into it, and I, I think maybe for the first couple of years, simply there was a benefit of being involved, which is because of the, we don't know what's there as a new school board member necessarily, maybe we haven't taken advantage of it yet. So I, I think I'll start looking into it a little bit more and see, and see what other organizations are out there. Check and see if we have to have three out of five, if that changes anything. But, yeah, it, when you, when you see $25,000, it's fiscally, you know, responsible, immediately it's like, wait a second, you know, but there's, there's value there, so I need to weigh that out in a little while, we'll get back for it.
Yeah, thank you. So I, I personally, I joined FSBA six years ago, worked through it, will tell you the values that you stated and don't need to restate. There's some good stuff that's there, there is definitely room for growth, I think. I have sat all the way up the selection committee to move the presidents and all that stuff through, all the way to, I was the advocacy chair, which is kinda the guy that oversees the state, the state agenda, you know what I mean, legislative agenda, the federal legislative agenda, and some of the advocacy wrapped around that. I'll tell you that it was a monumental chance that we, that I went through to deal with, all the way from Miami-Dade, all the way to conservative, like Sault Ste. County kind of stuff. And I will tell you that that was the year that the school board member out of Miami-Dade and I, Mr. Gallin, who's on the left, and I was on the right, we had both come together and then pulled us out of the National School Board Association. So there is an opportunity to recorrect and to go that direction if there is, like, if on a political side, people are like, look, I can't be a part of it because of those other things. I will say that there's an avenue there to continue to do so based upon advocacy and the groups that are inside there, I would say that there's that.
And I'm, I'm gonna be sitting again, in the week after, on the selection committee for the slate of officers for this coming year.
Yeah. So the other thing is, is that with that, I wanna say that I do, I do think that it's as much and as little as you can take advantage of, and there's an opportunity to steer it. I will tell you that over the last two, three months, I have called multiple people in the organization to get references to deal with some of the things that we have seen. And that's not something that we normally talk about, but it was invaluable. And I will tell you that, like, just some of the other things, I've asked them to review our board discussions and stuff like that to give feedback, because I felt like sometimes, like, reiterating back that I do anyway to every comment wasn't appropriate, right? So I asked them to review, and they give you an honest answer, they're not trying to kiss my butt, you know what I mean, they say, Matt, you gotta stop that. And then if you guys remember, Dr. Schiller had requested them, and I didn't even know about it, and I apologize, but he requested one of them to come and monitor our board meeting and give recommendations. She literally came within 48 hours, like, she was told, hey, can you come here? She came, I didn't know about it until like an hour before the meeting, and I was already prepping for the meeting, but that's the kinda level of response that they had. So-
They did give feedback to Mr. Susan, just not to us as a whole board.
So with that, with that said, moving forward, the other component is, is that I also joined the conservative school board coalition when there was, I mean, there was only like 10 of us, right? And I went through that process, I think that it was definitely worth the opportunity to do so because many of the things that we discussed in there, I also brought to FSBA as part of a legislative asks, and I think that I would encourage even individuals that may be on the other side, that they would bring, go to their organizations and come back, because I think collectively, the more organizations that we are a part of and utilize, I think that we are gonna be doing a better job. I think the, the other thing is, is that with, just so everybody knows, there's a couple of organizations that I was looking at joining just because they're outside of the scope of these two organizations, and they're like, there's a lot of these coalitions of coastal sub- Texas cities and, or coastal county school boards and rural county school boards, there's a lot of them that we don't even talk about. So like, the Heartland has, like, all the Heartland, which is all like Highlands, Hardy, DeSoto, and all those. Then there's like a coastal one that runs from like Tampa all the way around up to here, and they're not that expensive, and you can join them, and then you can use the collaborative efforts of like counties, you know what I mean? That would be a discussion I'd have to have with the incoming superintendent and stuff like that, but I wanted to say, if there's those things that we wanna be a part of, I think it's board direction, it's been past precedents, that we actually can join those with, you know what I mean, without any restrictions. So with that, I will be rejoining FSBA, but I also will be joining probably the conservative group, and I plan on trying to bring in some of those coalitions for discussion with the superintendent. So if that helps to give direction. Ms. Tammy, appreciate it. Is that what you needed? So then you just need us to come back, is there a, how long do you guys think you'll need, how long would you need to make this decision?
Can I give you an answer by the next board meeting, is that fair?
Oh, absolutely. I don't have to be until July.
Okay.
Like, you can say, I'll come back in June.
Okay.
Like, it's not a rush at all. And I think, I think letting a little bit more time to kinda, I, make the decision.
I can send out the, I can find it for sure, because I do know that we leave our, lose our spot on the Advocacy Committee. I don't have three. I'm sure about the Board of Directors, it would make sense if it also loses a spot in the Board of Directors.
That, that I think, I, I would hate to-
I don't wanna, yeah, I don't wanna curse everybody, just curse. I don't wanna curse or coerce you.
I think that making, making the decisions, I think making the decision based on that is irrelevant. I think if you don't feel the value of FSBA, then you have every right to do that, and I would support any value that you have towards that. I just, I know personally that I wanna get, really start helping out with some of the other organizations, and I think that if that would, that's gonna take me a little bit of time, so that's all. So, all right. Everybody good? Ms. Tammy, do you have the direction you needed? Okay. Next thing that was on the agenda that came on is, and I apologize about some of these things, but due to the changing circumstances, these were needed. Superintendent search prep for Tuesday, this is materials and things that, you know what I mean, contract negotiation dates, basic, basically, and Ms. Tammy, you can cut me off and speak if I don't do a good job, but the, what Ms. Tammy wanted to do, Ms. Aguirre, was just say, hey, guys, like, what kinda materials do you want? Do you want every resume printed? Do you, you know what I mean, like, things like that, right? So we just kinda, now we're in there. Tomorrow's the last day of applications, how do we really want the nuts and bolts to work? Is that what you're kinda thinking?
Yeah, I'm not sure if you're just gonna look at it and have it in your head, if you want hard copies printed, like, total, just resumes, have you do whatever, another week for you guys on Tuesday?
Can I request just for me personally to have them maybe printed today, so I can take them home with me? I like hard copies better, but I would prefer just having it in advance, because otherwise I'm gonna do it myself for the weekend, and there's no point in doing it on Tuesday.
I just stick around and print them on Tuesday.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
And then we still have some that are coming in.
Just because I also didn't bring my laptop, so I can't print it myself, otherwise I would.
Is that stay here tomorrow? I know there's definitely a few more that are coming in, so-
Yeah, there's indication that there's some people that are coming in, I don't know if it'll happen or not, but FSBA says that they've received calls that people are coming to apply. So I think that, Ms. Jenkins, if you do get them printed, I would check again, like-
Yeah, of course, yeah, yeah.
I, I don't need paper copies, I prefer to just, online if I have to.
Yeah, I'm a paper printing girl, I like to, I like to write on it and make my new person.
Myself included.
Yeah.
Does the entire packet include, like, certifications, or you just want the resume?
Resume is all that I would really prefer, I don't need certifications.
Yeah, not the extra attachment.
Okay, that would take longer.
The one thing I would add is, Ms. Green, if we go to a selection process to reduce those, if there's a aggressive team that can do background evaluations to check-
FSBA does all that for us, that's what we're paying them big money for.
Okay, I would, I would also say, maybe we just check in to see what that process is, and make sure that we have what they said is right.
Yes, I did check with Andrea about that to make sure, I did, and she said that she, she confirmed that they will be verifying the dates, and the way that she said that they will present to us is that if there was a conflict or something that they couldn't verify, they will just say we couldn't verify this. Not that it's not true, but they just couldn't verify the information, so that's to, you know, for us to decide from there.
Right.
Will they be telling us that on Tuesday? What are they telling us this? Like, how are they, how are they communicating?
I think they're going to tell us that when they present the applicants to us.
Got it.
And I would believe that would be-
So Ms. Tammy, it's some other items that you wanna talk to inside this scope?
I believe Paul just wanted to discuss possibly contract negotiations.
Yeah, the, may, there's like a week between the board selecting someone and the vote on the contract, given our last issues, are we wanting to maybe make it two weeks? I don't wanna be in a situation where the chair and I are trying to negotiate over two or three days and then get something up on the day before the board vote.
Paul, is there a way that we can keep it just in case, and then-
You can keep the special meeting on the ninth. If it goes really smoothly and everybody's like, hey, yeah, we're good to go, but then have it available to push to that night.
Just so that everybody understands, Paul and I had gotten to the agreement within the specified time, it's just that there were some additional requests that did not It's just that, um, there were some additional requests that did not pertain to what the direction of the board was that started to gather. So I think that Paul and I can. But I would, I would tell you that in the event that somebody wants to continue, that if we can have that option to continue. But I feel we will not run into that situation again. I think that we can do it pretty easily. And if not, then we can always extend out of respect for them.
Be flexible.
Yeah, I, I would appreciate that because we have a significant amount of out of state applicants too that I think are going to be, and people who are currently in educational institutions. There's going to be a lot of nuances and flexibility to whoever the pick is. So I think we need to be flexible to that.
Yep.
Yeah. FYI, I will not be here Tuesday. My daughter has an appointment and it's fast testing. So my wife told me she can't do it. So I'm not there. I'm hooked. Andrea Messina should be able to help guide you guys.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that. I, um, I'm fine with, let's leave the ninth on there just in case. Um, but I'm fine with, so the sixteenth is a regular board meeting, correct? So it wouldn't, wouldn't be challenging to, to move it to that point.
We'd just be canceling the ninth. So we would just say it's canceled because negotiations are still going on.
Is there any, I know obviously it's our job to do that, but is there any guidance that, that is part of our FSBA contract? That they give to, I mean, they gave in the, what was set out yesterday, they gave us some things to think about in a contract. But is that pretty much the extent of what they're going to?
Yeah, usually that's, as far as I know, I don't know if Andrea would supply you guys with hangers and contracts that other districts have used. And I could probably get that as well.
And we can use the form, we can use Dr. Mullins' form that is pretty, pretty strong that has been used before and use that as a base argument to come off of. And anything that needs to be added, we can add. I think, I think this, for the continuity of our district, when we start looking at other contracts across the state, each contract, depending on where it is, is going to have some different feel to it. And that contract that Dr. Mullins has is a pretty strong per board contract. One of the things, um, so I think that it's okay with you guys if we use that as the base and then just start that conversation and then let him or her, um, try to come in and maybe possibly say something that they may want to add. And that, that would probably be, because if we start looking at multiple contracts, it's going to be like, you know. So if that's okay with you guys, I'd like to do that. Okay? And anything else that you needed in that scope? Um, one of the other things that we had discussed is, is that Tammy's going to, she's, she's, she's getting ready to send out to doodle poll um, for the extra meetings because Ms. Campbell had brought up the, um, the, the very, uh, very appropriate argument that we were meeting like every day, all day. And we were going to become really good friends that week. So the thing is, is that, um, we had pushed that off, but what Ms. Tammy had said is, maybe what we do instead of like constantly going to doodle polls is something that I recommended a couple of years ago is that, um, we just block off Tuesdays. And then that way if we need them, we can use them. And if we don't need them, we don't need them. So I can do that because that works out for me for planning purposes for my business, my work. Um, but that's one of the discussions that way. Cause when we go to the doodle poll, to be honest with you, the majority of the board, up to four people, can pretty much meet every day. And the only reason I didn't, like I didn't want to carve somebody out, um, was those dates that we went to, right? And I think it's unfair to say, hey, sorry, we chose this day. We couldn't be there. And that kind of stinks, right? So I would say that if that's okay, if we can just block out Tuesdays, starting at a certain date, then we can use them if we need them. And if not, we don't. And they wouldn't be something that I would like say on this Tuesday, hey, next Tuesday we need to meet. They would just know that in four weeks, we have all the Tuesdays blocked out. And I can do that for schedules, vacations, for all that stuff.
I think it makes it a lot easier, honestly, if we just pick a day versus. I would appreciate it. I've canceled so many school.
Yeah.
Things that I had already planned because of the random things that we're doing and/or getting nervous that we might do something on that day or not. Um, and I'm mentally exhausted from trying to make sure I don't miss something that we put on the calendar that wasn't always there.
Oh, hate to bring us back. I was looking at Tuesdays. The ninth actually is a right of May. It's actually a regular board meeting day. So if we really need two weeks, we'd need to call a special meeting or put it off till the thirtieth of May. I don't think we want to do that. I, we were going to meet on the second to choose. And then a regular board meeting day is on the ninth of May and we were going to approve the contract at that time. So if we want to give ourselves another week, we actually have to call a special meeting. So I, cause I don't want to wait till the thirtieth.
Well, we can call a special meeting on the same day that we have a board meeting. We can have it just at a different time.
We'll know after the second. I'm sure if we need it, we have plenty of time to get in.
We should be good. Thanks for bringing that up, Ms. Campbell. Um, is that pretty good?
So we're good with Tuesdays? Do you still need to do the doodle poll?
I would say, like, for me, I would, I would need at least the next three weeks to, to, like, I need, I have stuff on Tuesdays for the next three weeks. I, usually about four weeks I can start blocking out. I'll give you the, um, say by the third week of April, I can start the Tuesdays, but I don't know if.
We already have.
I was like, there are a lot of.
We're back in the same situation we were in.
No, no, no. I'm not saying, I'm not saying that those are the dates. I'm just saying from that day on, just start blocking out.
At least.
So like May first, just say May first, all Tuesdays we can hold. And then if we need them, we need them.
And then of course with those vacations, as certain circumstances, just.
Yeah, I would say that we as a board, one of the things I wanted to bring up is in the future, and we can talk about this again. Um, sometimes in the summer, the county will position their dates to give a block that you can go on vacation. Ours is like almost, you know what I mean? We, we sometimes only have one meeting in June. I think there's two meetings this year, like, you know what I mean? Like, I would like to talk about that for future purposes, that we come in like middle of June and don't come back until middle of July. Like certain things, but depending on what the needs of the district are for procurement situation, I think we can do that. I think we just got used to doing that. And what happens is, is you're like, okay, we gotta be here. Cause Mike, we're going to be up in Michigan for the whole month of, of June. So I'm going to be flying back for the meetings. So the thing is, is that there might be an opportunity to just try to, but we've already said this year, we've already got them down. But going forward, I think that's something.
We did, we did, my first year on the board, we only had one meeting in June and then we only had one in July. And it did create some problems with some contracts. It's twitching over there.
Well, I.
So we can work it, but you know, it, it does create challenges for our staff as well because they have to be here. And there's only these little windows and like everybody goes on the vacation at the same time. Cause this is the longest break between school board meetings. But I hear you because when I look at my summer vacation, I know, and the staff does too. We have between this date and this date, you know?
And so, and what you can do is you can still meet twice in June. You can just do like early June, mid-June.
As long as we know, we can, we can plan.
Okay.
So as long as we know.
So, and we plan our, we, we do our calendar in November. So, you know, we can just think about, think about that for.
Yeah, you just say, you have a hundred contracts on your agenda before you break.
Yeah, okay.
We can add them to the hundred policies. Um, the other, the other issue, um, if that's okay, then one of the things that we had spoken about, um, was that we would, um, have special meetings for the policies. Because what's happening now, just so you guys know, is that we're about to put like thirty policies on a school board meeting, which we, um, it may be like, I have to say, does anybody wish to speak on this item? Anybody wish to speak on this item? And then sometimes people.
Just like that.
Sometimes people will utilize that as a time to come up and speak on the item. The issue is, the only, the only, which is fine, but what I'm saying is, is that, um, many of our procurement contracts, our contractors, our people come to the meeting and lately they've had to wait like three hours until we approve their procurement stuff. And I think that it behooves us to take that and put it on a special meeting. Now, we can still meet in the evening. We can still meet. I'm not saying that the time period. But it's just out of respect for some of the others that we could actually have some special meetings that we can just put that to. And, um, I think that would be better. And that way we're not, and we can focus only on the policies that we need to get through. Does that make sense?
Um, I would hesitate to put as much, I mean, listen, I don't like sitting there forever either. But one of the things that the, that people get frustrated about is access to board meetings. And when we change policies, we affect staff, we affect working parents. Now, I don't buy into the thing that, you know, people say, well, everybody works nine to five. Well, where have you been? Because people work shift work, people work flexible schedules, you know, even if the majority of people do work. But, but the people who work for us also do work nine to five. Um, so if we, when we have special meetings or during the daytime, it, it can be a barrier for people feeling like they need, you know, you can kind of communicate with us. So I.
No, I didn't say only during the day. I didn't mind doing it at night. I'm just saying that for the respect of the procurement people and the others that are inside that meeting.
No, I hear you. So you're talking about to make our evening meetings.
That's all. Even if it is, I, I don't know, but I just want to make the recommendation that we might be able to do that as opposed to putting them all on there. If you guys want to say, hey, throw them on there, let's just roll. Then I'll just run through it as fast as we can.
No, I mean, I'm, you know, we're.
You guys want to sit on it for a minute and bring it back?
Yes.
Is that good?
Fewer calls.
All right. Now, in the event that we do move to that and we have thirty or forty in the pipe, do we want to specifically reduce only a certain amount for each board meeting? Like twenty for each board meeting? Or do we want to just roll whatever we have? It would be my recommendation is to just roll whatever we have. But there may be staff that's like, look, we don't want to be there until five o'clock in the morning.
Well, I.
Like, you know what I mean?
So I, I would prefer to prioritize. Uh, we have, for example, on this week, one that we just had, we had policies like the cell phone policy and the, um, the book, thank you, the book challenge policy. It was their first, uh, public hearing. We'll have that, uh, at next board meeting for the final public hearing and our vote. To me, those are priority policies. The, the little bits and additions that we were talking about with the bylaws are not going to change the way that we work. They're just, we needed, we wanted to correct this, whatever, and get this in writing and maybe add something new of something that we're already doing, but now it's going to be written in policy. I think we need to prioritize not just for the meeting sake and the link, but for, um, the work of staff. And I was actually going to bring that up and I, I don't want to get us off the.
Oh, we're there already.
Yeah, we're okay. So it's okay. So I.
We crashed your.
I know. I, the priority for the policy review is to come into compliance with state statute. And so what, what the state statute says is, and our policy says, we will review. And we're trying to get a place where we can mark it. So it's documented that we reviewed. But I would say this, I think there's a way that we can continue plugging through our policy, especially the ones that are, um, it's been a long time. And, um, and yet pace it out a little bit. And I'm, I'm going to get it because I want to say, oh, she's trying to slow us down again. Well, yes. But in a different way, not slow us down in the way that you might be thinking. In the way that we're not killing staff, especially what I said earlier, that we've already just distributed extra responsibilities on some really key people. But yet still have a documented review and then we can just pace it out a little bit. Where I say documented is every time we have discussion, for example, when we had our meeting last week and we went through the zeros of bylaws, it is documented in our minutes, every policy that we looked at. Um, correct Tammy? Even if we said, we don't want to do anything, it's documented. Um, and so it will be eventually, when we get that system up in board docs where it can say, reviewed on, it'll say that. But we have documentation that we review that policy. Um, but then my expectation, honestly, even for the ones we talked about last week, is not that they come to our next workshop. Because we've got so many really important things and that makes us long and we know how the marathon days go. Uh, but that we know, hey, put them in a reasonable timeframe. Prioritize the ones, like I don't want any of those to get in way of the work we're going to do on the discipline policies and the dress code. And those, those need to come first. If we don't, if we add a statute reference to, you know, I, I just want staff to prioritize their time. I want us to, to prioritize our time and the, and the work that we're leaning, asking them to do. So I would suggest that we still maintain our one thousands, two thousands, three thousands. And, and we go through, that way, one, we're accountable for having reviewed. Then we can say it'll be in our minutes, we reviewed. Every board member said, did you read, did you review? Did you review? Did you view? What are some ideas you guys want to bring to the table? But we don't start with the revision process until the capacity issue is dealt with because of the work that everyone's doing. Uh, because as we move forward, even though the bylaws and the zeros really mainly applied to us and very high level things, even the one thousands that we're supposed to look at today, and especially as we go in the two thousand, three thousands, are going to require not just Paul, but by the way, yesterday was his birthday and he was supposed to have it off and he was here all day. So not just Paul, but the different departments that those touch. In the one thousands, we have some things that are going to touch HR. And by the way, we've got Carol who's doing two jobs. And when we start talking about, you know, um, a lot of the, even the, a lot of our policies actually touch HR. Um, student services who's being led by interim at the time, um, you know, leading and learning and student services who are dealing with the discipline stuff. I just think I'd like to space out the revision process. We need to as a board own these policies and know what's in them. So I don't want us to slow down the review. But I would suggest that we slow down the revision because every time we have twenty policies, thirty policies on, and I've sat through several of those meetings that even before you guys got on the board, we, we were like, why'd you bring twenty policies to us in a month? Because it's so much work on us. But it's that reflective of all the work that it is on the people who right now are at the breaking point. So I would suggest we, again, keep going with the review process. Let's have the meetings and say, hey, did you review? Let's go to, you know, what, what might you want to change? And then we toss that back to staff to bring back to us because most of these policies are going to be things that they have to own. We will have a superintendent in place to help us walk through some of that. Cause the one thousands even that we're talking about today, a lot of that has to do with board, uh, board superintendent relationships and communication. And so that we can slow down the revision, but we will have documented in our minutes, the board reviewed policy such and such on this date. The board reviewed, reviewed on this date. We'll have, it'll have in the minutes. And then we're doing the good work of owning these policies, knowing what's in them. And if we come across something and go, this is a big problem and we need to change this, then we, the staff, we can ask the staff to prioritize that. But I don't think we need to prior, everything can't be number one. And I think we're just getting our situation, ourselves into a situation where everything's becoming the number one. So that would be my recommendation. Let's keep reviewing, but push off the revision.
All right. Anybody else?
I guess I just, um, I have a clarifying question just to make sure I understand what, what you're suggesting. I, I hear you and I agree with you, but, um, are you saying push off the revision as in having staff immediately work on those revisions that we discussed and putting it on the agenda, but still documenting the recommended revisions? Or are you saying, don't even do it?
Yes, if I can, if I can.
If I can ask her another question. Um, I, that we take notes, you know, we take the notes of, you know, this person said they want to, you know, we came to consensus, we want to add this and we wanted to, or, or just our concerns. Because some of them may be concerns and we, we may, we may need staff to come back to us and say, this is why this is the way this is. This is why it's different from Yola. Um, and that we'd start the work session, which is our first chance to, for them to bring it to us and us to kind of hash it out, uh, those changes, that that is on a more reasonable schedule.
If, if I can speak real quick, um, the direction that we gave was we would review them. And then staff's recommendation to come back to us because they have to put it together is not on the top. So like if we go and we review them and like you're saying, like there is no absolutely that we said, they have to come back at the next board meeting. Because there was discussion where I was trying to work with Dr. Schiller about, okay, if we review the zeros today, do they come back? Like I was trying to lay out an agenda along with all of our priorities and stuff back in like January, the day after we did that. And it came to us that, look, like there's going to be some of these that we say that then they're going to have to come back because staff's not always available while we're going through these. They're going to come back. So the idea is, is that we review them. And then if staff has an issue with them, there's no like bring them back. I mean, within two months, but if there's an issue where first off is, is that they have to change it back. And there's no requirement for them to bring it back because of what you said is stated in there. The other thing is, is that what we can do for your respect is, is that if we come across one that's kind of like taking us some time, we just say, let's pause this one, let's move on and get the rest of them done and then set that one aside. I completely agree with where you're going. I think, um, the majority of where we're going from this point on is that many of the other staff members have been keeping their policies up to date based on statutory laws. They've been doing a good job. To be honest with you, the board, we, we just, we hadn't done that. So I think as we move forward, we're going to see a lot of them that are already in line. They're already good. They just need to check. And then I agree with you though, that if they are cumbersome, let's pass. And there's no back date that says they have to bring them back to us immediately. Because a lot of them are just like Paul and, um, and Rama, right? Putting together like, how to put it in in Yola and all that stuff, then they're slanting. So like Paul and I had already discussed about creating somebody, maybe Tammy or somebody, that they own this process throughout the year. And that's what they do. So they identify all the Yola updates, all that stuff, bring them to us on a regular basis rather than us going through all of them.
Right. No, I agree.
So I think that that works. I think that was the original intention. We haven't changed from that. I think.
I don't, I just, I guess I don't know that that was expressed.
Absolutely.
Clearly is what you just said.
And I, and I don't think that's necessarily how it's being directed, implemented from a certain position.
Just for the zeros, I'll tell you where, like, since you guys went over the zeros, we're on as a process, I want to say six. And she's gotten the packet to me. I still have to go through and check them. And so that's where we are right now. Out of the thirty that are in the zeros, I'm through six.
And I think, and, and Paul and I have been discussing that and I apologize if that direction wasn't given. Um, that's on me. So, um, but what I would say is, is that, um, that was, that was meant. So I'm so sorry. I saw you going and I want, I didn't want to cut you off. I wanted to just kind of explain it.
Yeah.
But you're, you're, uh, Ms. Campbell, um, I tend to, um, you and I are a perfect combination. Because I'm, I'm over here going, you're over here, you're over here going like this. And if we both appropriately come together, we will make it into the middle and that's where we need to be. So I just wanted to.
So I, just another. What'd you say?
That's why I.
Uh, I don't know about that. I, listen, I've been in the middle for years trying to pull people back. So, you know, my muscles. Um, I, uh, just gonna toss something out there. Our most, you know, the zeros obviously were most long-term, right? As we move forward, I agree. There's a, um, just, I told you about Volusia before we started about them having the marathon meeting. It went even longer than ours. Part of that was because they actually found that they, their policies, they had some that were over thirty years. Many, many. And so.
Considered an antique.
Right. And, and so what they did was they actually started with the oldest first and said, we're going to, so they're actually down now to the point where they're down to the twenty year ones. Which our two thousand two, but our ones that say two thousand two are like the, the seal and the boundaries. I mean, like, we just need to say review them because those will probably never change. That if we're not going to change the name of our school district to, you know, unless the county changes their name. But, you know, so if something else we could do if we wanted to is do it by age. I mean, I'm not saying we shift gears at this point, but I mean, you know, like you said, as we go through, there's going to be some that we just revised and it'll be easy enough. But I, I also I just said that through that out there because I wanted us to feel better.
I think one of the interesting things is talking to, to friends that are on school boards around the state, they're all finding this. They're all going through policies right now. So it seems like this is something that every district is doing. Um, I, I agree with what you're saying on, hey, these are not priority. We don't need staff to run off right away on some of these things. We're like, hey, we need to add a Florida statute. We need to update it to reflect Yola. Now, if we find something that's major that like, hey, whoa, this is a big deal, those ones, I, I agree that there should be a prioritizing process to say these ones jump to the front. Um, and then, and then downtime, haha, uh, work on the other ones. You know, I say downtime jokingly because I know that there's not very much of it, but it's just not a priority. So I agree with what you're saying. I like going chronologically in order. For me, as. I like going chronologically in order, for me, as a new board member, this has been extremely, extremely helpful, and it's been good to cross-reference Florida statute, our state constitution, our Neola updates, like, looking at all that and putting those components together, it's been a very good process. So I would like to continue going through the way that we're going through, but that's my personal process.
Yeah, I think, I think there was some miscommunication and I'll own that, so I think we're good, so.
I think, just your suggestion of the timeline thing, I think the only issue with that is that we've already discussed this and addressed it, it's not necessarily accurate if something says 2002 that it's never been reviewed.
Right.
So it doesn't really, like...
Like I said, I mainly threw that out there because I want us to feel better.
Like, we reviewed the thousands when we had put in place the, hey, we're going to, we all want to go look at the, look at them all and come back and talk. We stopped at some point, right, like, maybe 3000, doing it so holistically, but, you know, to be fair, technically, like, this first one, it says 2002, but we know we absolutely reviewed this one, it's just, there was no way of documenting that, if there was no actual revision done.
See, first positive, we changed the documentation, because unless it's documented, it didn't happen, right?
Well, it's documented in the meeting minutes, yeah.
So, is anybody else, we think we got through everything, we're good?
All right.
Okay, you guys, did you guys want to take a minute before we get started on the next one, use a restroom break? A gentleman was here from the news that asked me to do a quick interview, stuff like that, is that okay?
We can take a five minute break.
Anyways, okay.
All right, fine, good.
We're back, okay. All right, let's come back to it, here we go. So as you guys know, we have multiple policies to go through, we have, does everybody have access to the board documents that we had related to the Neola policy updates and everything else? We're good to go? Does everybody have that access point?
Yes.
Okay, so here we go. All right, we're going to go to policy 1001, District Organization, I'll open up the floor for any suggestions. Does anybody wish to change anything that's in 1001? Okay, I'm pulling open the Neola update, the Neola update's a little bit different than what we have. Does anybody wish to change to the Neola update?
I think the main difference I saw was that no employee shall be responsible to more than one supervisor, but I don't, I don't know that that's...
Yeah, I don't...
...necessary to, that's accurate.
Yeah, and that can create some silos.
Absolutely.
I'll give you an example, like, the tech integrators, and, it's not even, I don't remember, but at the schools...
Right.
They've, that shifted, they're responsible to Russell Cheetah...
Right.
...and his department, but they're also responsible to the principals in the building, and we don't want to create this, you know...
No, I, I'm just going to be added.
So I don't have to do what you say.
Yeah.
So...
That was the only difference I saw in here, that we didn't look like we incorporated in our policy, which I don't suggest that we have that one, honestly, so.
Okay, so we're good. Paul, what I would do, though, is I would make the recommendation to include Florida statute 1001.51 at the bottom, because it's noticed in Neola. Okay? We're good? Next one is 1002. There we go. All right, does anybody have any...
I'm telling you, we could have really good snacks.
Does anybody have any changes that they would like to do to one?
That doesn't count for the...
I got some walnuts.
Are we still on this thing?
No.
Have you, what'd you say?
I said, I got some walnuts.
Those are really good snacks.
Mr. Susan ate my cashews.
I did, I ate all the cashews, and then I went out and bought more cashews and put them in there, and I'm already down to half of it, so I've already put two more on the order before you, Paul. So cashews may be one of the items that we have to get. So we're moving to Assessment of District Goals, 1002, there's a couple of Neola, you know what I mean, references, it references the same Florida statute. Does anybody wish to change the current one? Do we have any additions? And anybody wish to add anything from the Neola subject into it?
I think the differences are just like, we used one word instead of another word.
Yep.
Yeah, there wasn't anything major on this one.
We're good? All right, duly noted, I don't think, after the review, that there's any changes, Paul. Okay, moving on to the next one.
Oh wait, and we have the correct, we have the same statute, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, we did.
I thought you had said you wanted to change that, so we're...
Just that one, from the previous one.
Those were the first. Okay, so we're not making any changes on 1002.
Yep, so 1010, Board Superintendent Relationship, if you look on the, if you look on the Neola, there's a couple more statutory references that are there, and there's a little bit, it seems to be pretty much in order with what we had already, except for that first paragraph a little bit, so. Does anybody wish to change anything on 1010?
I think just to make it reflect the Neola one, there are some differences.
Yeah, the like, the board responsible for determining the last sentence, the second to last sentence, the third to last sentence are the same, and then it changes a little bit from first, second, and third. So we can adopt the Neola update one to make sure that it's in line with Florida statute.
Yeah.
Yeah. You want the Neola update?
Yes, I would think they're...
Yeah, I would be good to move towards the Neola version to make sure that we're in, because it has extra statutory authority and everything else.
Tammy, we can always hash these out if there's some little things.
If you, when they bring it back to us, so what will happen, just so everybody knows, is that these will come back to us...
Right.
And we can then proofread the rest of it to make sure that it's in line with what we know, there's plenty of opportunities to change these.
That's fine.
We're good?
Yep.
Okay, so we're going to do a Neola update on 1010. Next up is 1020, is there anybody that wishes to change any of these for...
I think we need to update, I wrote on here that we need to add the Neola letter G under the recruitment procedures, we don't have, we have something similar, but we're actually saying.
Yeah, it's like, reflected in F.
Yeah.
The one above, so.
But I think G on there is...
They moved it and they expanded it.
Yeah, it covers all the bases, so.
So hang on, so you like G on...
They put it somewhere else.
Okay.
So what you're saying is, is that under recruitment procedures...
Right.
...shall be prepared, you want to make sure that the G that is referenced in there is also referenced inside of our policies, so, because it has some of that in F, but we want to make sure that G is inside there.
It just expands.
Just replace F with G is really...
Would you guys like to just literally take, tell the Neola, want to just consider that?
Hang on, then we're missing something, then if we're...
We're missing one.
Why do we have, why do they have, why do they not?
I think two of these are condensed, I think is what I saw. D is condensed, I think.
Oh, they have a, their B, we don't have, Preparation of Written Specifications of Qualification in addition to Proper State Licensing.
Ours is A, I mean, our, well...
You see that, we don't have their B, that's why they have more than we do.
So what I would say is, is there's an extra Florida statute that's referenced here, it might be that what we're looking at is those updated terms, so if you guys take a second and can look at the Neola policy, it might be that we just adopt that one, as opposed to going and trying.
The Neola's dated 2020, and the last update was 23, so they've done a little bit of work.
Where are you seeing their, okay.
At the bottom.
Okay.
It says it was copyrighted in 2020 and Tammy Schroyer updated it in February of this year, so it just fits.
Yeah, that's helpful. I think for ease, and, because also within the language itself, it references the statutes, I think it probably would be smart to adopt the Neola of this one.
I agree.
All right, so adopt the entire Neola. Mr. Paul Gibbs for 1020, moving on to 1030.
And before we move to 1030, there is a, oh, wait.
1020.
Yes, for like...
128, never mind, scrap that. There's a few more coming, and I thought this was one, but you're right, that's...
Yeah, I looked at that when I, when I was moving through, it's interesting. Okay, so 1030, we have, very long, it seems that the Neola has changed a little bit too, along with an update modified by Ms. Tammy on 2023, and references the same Florida statutes, so some of these are, you know, some of them are difficult because we would like to change something but don't know if it's referenced inside the Florida statute, and so I think what we do is, is we just say, hey, look, is there any red flags in here? And if there's not, then enough in the...
For example, we'd have to just modify some, because they talk about a policy 1210, which is their, what their Standards of Ethical Conduct, and we don't actually have a 1210, ours is...
Yeah, 3210 or something like that.
It's number something different, so, you know, we'd need to find out where that is and make that change. That's a small change, but just make sure we have included what needs to be included.
Mr. Paul, do you, is your team able to see that kind of stuff, or should you need us to flag?
I mean, we can, we'll work it up, and then when it comes through that first work session, if the board catches something, we'll...
There we go, perfect. Is that okay with you, Ms. Campbell?
Yeah, and then is the, the dollar amount limits, that's revolved specific, right? So at the bottom, oh wait, hang on, yeah, at the bottom, in ours, under U, we have the, what has to come to the board for approval?
Yeah, that's the board's designation.
That's revolved specific, right? So this is probably going to have to be a combination, or just some adjustments that we make, because different boards can have different rules for what their needs are. You see, I'm talking about NRU. Which would vary according to different districts, I mean, you know, if you're in a tiny, small district, that number is probably...
Significantly smaller.
Right. Tiny and small, I don't know, I use double words, it's a, it's a category.
We're good?
So we're going to adopt Neola's policy for this, is that what we're saying, with the exception of...
With adjustments.
Right. To reflect our policy number when we talk about that.
Yeah, I think this might be something we need to ask staff to bring some recommendations to us, based on the Neola and the merge.
And what ended up happening, you know what I mean, we'll catch it on the back end, so, all right? So did you get that? Mr. Paul will adopt it, find us any minor changes in references? All right, so 1030.01, we have a Neola reference that is, ours is consistent with that.
Yeah, because theirs is 2008. Thank you for pointing out the year, because that helps me know how far, did they make any changes since we did? Because if they didn't, it's, you know, not, not really going to make that.
What it does is, it basically takes and keeps some of the back end of the policy together, but then the front end of the policy is a little bit different.
Do we want to add anything there? Because this is speaking to the development of administrative procedures, and we had discussed before that we were going to tie our administrative procedures to our policies, so do we want to add something to this policy that says all administrative procedures will be tied directly to a policy, or something to that effect?
You're saying that administrative policies should be reflected towards a policy that we have written and viewed and be available on...
Well, yeah, because what we had talked about...
That's what I got back in mind.
Yeah, what we had talked about originally was that we were finding that some of the procedures or guidelines maybe couldn't correlate back to a policy because we hadn't written the policy, or the policy was, or wasn't correct. So I'm just saying, when we're talking about developing, this is talking about the developing of administrative procedures, I think it would be smart to have something in this policy that says administrative procedures need to be directly linked, or cite the policy that it's linked to, or something of that nature, just so that they tie back together, right?
Love that.
I think we'd also talked about, this was a recommendation of Dr. Schiller, and we don't, we don't need to throw out everything, because there was, you know, some things, but what was brought to us and he asked us to consider is, should administrative procedures come before the board? Not necessarily for a vote, but just for our review, because that was where some conflict had arisen. So this particular policy says that, the way we have ours, no, no, not looking at the Neola, says that should, I just put something on top there, should, in the judgment of a superintendent, should we adopt it? In other words, if it's something that he just really wants the buy-in of the board, he can bring it, and there have been times that, that we adopted the administrative procedure along with the policy. For example, on the, this wasn't administrative procedure, it's a form, but when we did the book policy this week, the adopted form was also attached, and so there's some that we've had, like, we have adopted and voted on. I don't know that that, because administrative procedures sometimes need to change more flexibly, more expeditiously, so it might, but I think it still should, then a six-week...
Right, I understand what you're saying.
...long process, so I think it needs to come, there was an option for it just to come before us.
It could be on information.
Right, right. And the other thing I would say is, I don't want to put any, I would be hesitant to put something in here that says they have to have administrative procedure ready, write and redo the policy, because I think sometimes that's developed after.
Could be.
I mean, it wouldn't have to be, but I mean, maybe hesitant's not the right word, but...
If it's ready, it could.
Yeah, if it's ready, it could, if it's not, then it comes before us at a later date.
I think it would just be smart to say something to the effect of that any administrative procedure should directly reference a policy that it ties to.
Yes, right.
That way, we don't get in that gray area, and if an administrative procedure comes up and there's no policy that it correlates to, that's probably something that would trigger, should be triggered to the board to say, hey, we probably need a policy for this. I mean...
I like that transparency, I think the issues that you brought up are valid, admin for, you know, administrative procedures for review upon changes linked to a policy, I think that's very good. And then it already talks about they should be available as I'm trying to...
I think they are.
To be honest with you, like, some of the people may not know that, and that didn't work out real well. I like it kind of full circle. Does anybody object to any of that?
I don't object to it, I just want to be clear, in case people are like hyper-listening to what's being said. It is the habit of our staff when we are reviewing policies, for them internally, they have been reviewing those procedures that go along with it to ensure that it's in compliance with the policy. I know that's not literally what you're saying, I just want to like, make sure that's really clear, they're not just falling by the wayside as we're revising policies, so I just want the public to be aware.
And I don't know that we have any administrative procedures that aren't, don't have the same policy, but we have some administrative procedures that are, that are even more outdated, you know, so...
No, I don't believe that.
People are doing the right thing.
I know.
It just may not be written down, but it took good exercise, you know, as we're going through.
Well, and to be fair, some of those things are, they are fluid, and they are often, they would technically often be modified, because as rules are changing, as the environment is changing, those things are changing.
Right.
So sometimes they literally have to work through them before they say, hey, we're going to make this an official change and recommendation.
And if our policies, if the laws change that won't require us to change our policies, but it requires them to change their procedures, that's sometimes, that's why I don't want that to have to go through rulemaking, because...
No, and I, I understand the need to sometimes implement a change to a policy, all I'm just saying is, I think it would be smart to have any procedure, just link it to the policy, because sometimes I think what happens is a procedure will be established, and when the public goes to look and they're like, where is this coming from? It should tie directly back to a policy that the board has, and if it doesn't tie back, then maybe there's a question there or a conversation that needs to be had further, so I just think it holds some accountability when it comes to administrative procedures or guidelines, things that we're doing, they should correlate, because really, everything They should correlate because really everything should derive from policy that the district does. So that would be my recommendation is just to add something.
I like that. Paul, do you need any more direction from that?
Well, I guess we would probably need a majority to say yes to that. I don't know. That's just.
Well, it'll be in the policy.
Okay.
So you guys will make the changes when you see it, if it's not worded right.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Good. 1030.01 is complete. Paul, you have all the direction. 1040 is the next on the deck.
They do have quite a few updates.
Yeah.
They do.
Our policy, interestingly enough, doesn't reference how often we evaluate. I mean, I know that we're doing this annually, but I didn't see anything in there that said how often.
I think that was.
Oh, it does. Sorry. Beginning on the annual evaluation cycle. So I guess. All right. I missed that.
They just put it in in the Neola version. It's.
So just as you guys know, the references to the legal are the same, but the Neola update is 2020 and Tammy has updated it. And this is not Tammy O'Gwire.
Yes, I know.
Ms. Schroyer, for people that are listening, Ms. Schroyer from Neola has been updating on February 9th, 2023. So it probably behooves us just to walk right through this with all the checkboxes, just to make sure that we're.
Right.
Following it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I would say that if we walk through it, it says the board shall, and then we should check annually, right?
I don't want to do them no later than because I know there's been times.
No.
That we.
No.
Needed to flex around people's schedules and things that were going on.
I think annually is good, right?
Yeah. Evaluate the performance of the superintendent. Such evaluations shall include.
Mars.
Yeah, I mean, like A, B, and C. You guys okay with that?
Yeah. I.
I'm not sure on C.
Yeah, I mean, I can see that.
I don't understand why we'd be evaluating the board's effectiveness on the, I mean, we do our own evaluation. That one doesn't make, is that somewhere in our?
I think, to be honest with you, part of it is this. Did the board give direction for this to happen? And then did you complete that direction? That's where I saw that when I read it.
Right. But that's not what it says in plain language. So I'd rather just.
Own effectiveness in providing direction to the superintendent.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it should be.
Yeah, let's not put C in.
So A, B. We're good?
A, B. I think there was a different intention there, but it reads like you're saying.
Right.
Right.
Well, we could words method to change it to say. To what you're saying. I understand what you're saying too. I'm just saying, does the superintendent follow the direction?
The superintendent's effectiveness in following the direction of the board.
There you go.
There you go. Boom.
Would that also be under B, though?
No, it'd be B. The working relationship.
I think you said it's. Now, working relationship and effectiveness of following board direction is probably.
Because we have.
I think that's a David and Sugar place, B, personally.
We have, but well, in our evaluation tool, which we haven't looked at yet, but if we, assume we, next year, when we're evaluating this superintendent after his first year or her first year. We can, we'll have it, we can make the tool we want. But we do have separate categories that talk about board relationships as far as community. To me, B is our communication. Are we.
Right.
Communicating between us individually and how he or she is communicating to us as a board.
Right.
Respect levels, things like that. To me, C has more to do with job function execution.
Very good dealing with.
So I I would either just say not do C or flip it around to what we said just a second ago, the superintendent's effectiveness in following the direction of the board.
Yeah, I think that's a good.
Yeah, I think that's an important.
I just want to jump in here because when you continue to go on, it says.
It's a later.
It says it later on, a recommendation from a board.
But that's, I think.
Committee.
Yeah.
We can, and I, we might want to strike that because we don't have the. Sorry. Committee.
I think keeping it there, I like the direction you guys were going with, making sure that effectiveness in providing direction from, you know what I mean? I liked what you guys were saying there, and I think it goes on to the pipe even more. But there's a lot of times when communications between a board member and superintendent are not known, the degree of the relationship from the other board members because it's difficult to talk about. So that gives them the opportunity to speak to, hey, you made these recommendations and they didn't get heard, even if they didn't come up and stuff like that. Does that make sense?
Why? Maybe, maybe. I, to me, C is the board as a whole. I don't, it shouldn't be, B can be individual.
Yeah.
As well as the board as a whole. Because like I said, communication with, you know, we don't need to feel the board like we're constantly in a contentious relationship with our, you know, superintendent. To me, C needs to only come from the board as a whole.
As a whole, right.
Of the board. Because there shouldn't be individual board members coming to the superintendent saying, you need to do this.
No, but there are some things that individual board members may bring up as a point of reference that doesn't get communicated to the other board members if a superintendent is trying to leverage a certain type of, does that make sense?
Yeah.
That's all.
I hear you. I hear you.
It's just one of those things.
And I, in addition to these.
Doesn't matter.
In addition to these, just tossing this out there, and and we don't have to right now establish this, but we do have actually eight. Categories is not the right word. Eight. Sections, we call it, Tammy, of our review for this, when we do our.
Standards.
Standards. We have eight standards, and under the standard, there are one, two, three, four, or all the way up to 15 under one of the standards. We evaluate superintendent on, and and some of them are included in here. These are pretty generic, but I don't know if we wanted to even include more. And we make, and we can always add those at the time when we get there. But, you know, this, they all incorporate this somewhat, but just.
So are we looking to wordsmith C?
I think we should. I like the fact, I like what you said, Ms. Campbell. I mean.
So we can change it to the superintendent. The superintendent's effectiveness in executing direction provided by the board. So almost like flip-flop.
Yeah, flip-flop around.
Right.
I'm good with that is that I was just, I was, you know, I always like to, my husband does some crazy, but what about this? You know? We can leave it incidentous with the change that we just said.
With the change that we just said.
Let's keep moving. Because I would like to be done by lunchtime.
Yeah. We were going good there, weren't we?
Yeah.
All right.
Such officially based on defined quality expectations developed by the board for each criteria being assessed, that will follow what we're, that that handles actually what I was talking about because we have the criteria.
Right.
The board. And the superintendent, this is not in ours. The board and the superintendent, at least not this way, jointly shall, outside of each evaluation, determine the method by which it shall be conducted. Do, so our first option is do we want to add and the superintendent jointly? So we're kind of coming agreeing together on how we're going to. Do the evaluation.
I don't. I don't know about that. It seems.
I mean, I don't know, I guess we do do that when it's a following year that they've been here. We do ask them like, hey, what worked, what didn't work? Which was effective because sometimes some of those categories didn't necessarily make any sense or it's not how.
Right.
They couldn't really respond to the box because it didn't make any sense.
Right.
And responsibly.
There was a category, there was, give you an example, there was something in the evaluation tool which we just kind of moved forward from year to year to year that said the superintendent will develop an individualized professional development plan for every employee. Yeah. No, not him personally, but you know, we were responsible for that.
Yeah.
Well, the thing is, some of that was tied to old language that was part of teacher evaluations.
Right.
But with the way it was said is everybody. And what we, what we really wanted was, we want you to provide professional development for every employee so that all of our employees have access to training, leadership, opportunities to move up, which was an important thing for Mr. Susan too. So so we have that, but not a individualized.
Yeah.
Point. So we, so he asked us, so we collaborated. He asked us, can we remove that individualized? And actually, let's stayed on there for a few more years and we finally, I think we finally got it off. But, you know, just so we understood, because that wouldn't be a, like, if that's on the criteria, we have to score.
Right.
Is that happening? I know it's pretty low, but we didn't really want it on there. He didn't want it on there, but we, he directed our attention. So there is some some benefit to the collaboration. Obviously, we get the final say.
Okay, so.
So I don't, I don't want to spend 30 minutes on this checkbox, but. It probably would be good to have some.
I strike the board committee because we don't have recommendation for a board committee. We don't, that doesn't currently exist, does it? When it comes to the evaluation of superintendent.
And it would probably be more if we had a really large board.
Okay.
We get this, we get, A, we do, self-analysis, which is what Paul's going to do. After participation, we each get smart sheets.
Right.
And an opportunity to put comments in. We don't do C.
So strike that one.
Compilation of assessments.
On a prepared standard form, which that's.
That.
By individual.
The standard form is, I would think, would be the smart sheet. So we're all using the same tool.
Right. All right.
By individual board members then. The compilation of assessments. I guess that's from our, that's our, like.
Yeah.
Then Tammy, we send them to Tammy, Tammy puts them all together, and then she has them ready for the day of.
Yeah.
Which we can't see ahead of time because then that's breaking sunshine.
Right.
But she she puts them together and then we walk in on the day of, and that's the compilation.
Okay, got you.
But C, we need to, yeah, we don't need to include C.
And superintendent says, all right, so.
We also. Haven't done E necessarily, except that informally, the superintendent would ask us, is there something that you're not seeing, you know? And F goes on the board.
Makes sense either.
Yeah, F goes on the board evaluation, not on the superintendent evaluation. So I would say.
Yeah.
We can include E, but it's, I don't know that we.
I don't think it's necessary to be here.
Yeah, I don't want to put it in policy. So I would say strike E and F also.
All right.
Are you doing it jointly or?
Can you just make sure that it's not in statute?
What do you mean jointly?
That the checkbox for the board and superintendent jointly.
Oh, the first checkbox?
Yeah. To do A, B, and D.
Oh, no, because I think we're determining right now how we want to do it. So maybe we're not, because I just realized that the method, I mean, if we want to, we're about to have a new superintendent.
Right.
It doesn't say we have to do it every year, but it says we, if we put that in there, you know, it won't be in place in time for the new superintendent, but we can, with the spirit of it. Do we want to sit down with the new superintendent before we do evaluation and say? Or do we want to just go ahead and check the boxes that we said we want to do right now?
Take him down, and then once we form our strategic plan and we start going through that with him, then we can bring this back up and say, but that way at least it's been marked that we reviewed it to statute.
You can always do it with superintendent without it being a policy. That's a prohibitive.
Right. So let's, let's not have that.
I was going to say, not that I foresee this happening, but there could be a situation where someone is like super adamant about the evaluation process and tool, and if the word and is in there, they could technically argue that.
Yeah.
They have an equal value of making that decision.
So we're not checking that box?
Or.
C.
Paul, you can just make sure when we go through these that we didn't like not include something from statute that I care about. If that even matters, I don't know.
If it's given to us as an option.
Yeah.
I'm going to assume it's a may and not a shall.
No, I don't think statute tells you how you have to evaluate, you're just supposed to evaluate.
Perfect. Perfect. All right. Everybody okay on that? Did we get, was that?
The rest, we have options at the end.
Yeah, we gotta keep going around them.
I just didn't know where we were.
Yeah. We're almost there.
We kept going when you walked out.
We get to cashews. No, I asked, I asked this.
All right.
Right.
I, I feel like all of those options are good. A, B, C, and D. I don't think we.
I feel like we do do that.
We do. We don't, we don't adjust salaries, the base salary, but we do, well.
We.
We, we, right, there's incentive bonuses. And we, we have established objectives and, yeah. Except for. D is again, going back to the board evaluation.
I read that a little bit differently. I read that as like the superintendent is responsible for the school district. And so at the end, we do have conversations as, with the superintendent, like for him or her. And he had in the past come back to us with, these are things we need to improve as a district, these are our focuses. So I read that as how can the school system improve?
Yeah.
I guess I agree with that too, because, you know, if you are the employee and you're coming to your employer, and in that evaluation, if you're honest and it is respectful, then the employee should be able also say, I, I would do better if you'd support me in this way. You know? So I think that it's good for us to have these conversations as we think D's nice. Yeah, I'm good with all of them.
Yeah. I, I think we should keep all of them. Honestly, I can't see. Let's take any of those off of there. These are all good talking points and things that we should be discussing during annual evaluation. Okay. And evaluation.
Waiter.
You had a full one.
No, I'm just kidding. I was scrappy now because you're not paying attention anymore. All right.
So we're good with this one? We can move to the next.
We're good. Yep.
All right.
We're good?
Non-reemployment superintendent, which they've changed the title of theirs to non-renewal or termination of employment.
I think that's probably a better title.
Agreed. Sorry. Yep. So change one, change the title.
I think for E is here, we might as well just adopt.
We should adopt it because we need that line.
There's not enough differences to argue.
We're good to go. Everybody agree?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, 1060.
Um, hang on, because they, oh, never mind. I thought they had some in between. There is some place where they have some in between.
We'll catch you. Don't worry. Hold on. 1060. Seems like at the bottom is Tammy again updated. This woman's incredible.
It's the next one.
2020 is the last time this one was updated. It has the same references for statute.
We need to adopt it because we're missing that last line in there too. The nothing herein shall interfere with any rights available to superintendent or the Family Medical Leave Act. I, I think we should adopt their policy.
There's, there's check options, so.
Okay, sorry.
I think when I read this the other day, it reminded me of when we had the COVID situation and they, we didn't know if the board members would be incapacitated and we gave the superintendent the authority. Remember all that conversation? That was insane.
That was before her, yeah. It was very controversial when it was true, but we were trying to literally, this was like March or April of 2020 and we're like, what if three of us die? You know?
Or we were in the hospital.
Or we're, or we're in hospital or we're quarantined and yeah, it was, it was, and it was very short term and had to be approved by the board the next week. It was all, you know, had all the checkbox.
So just reminded me of that.
Yeah. So I think the first checkbox is
With medical documentation.
Right. I mean, it would be necessary, they, you know, you have someone who's going through some severe treatments or something like that. And I think we need to leave in the second box also, but we have little ones underneath that.
Are you wanting to request to the superintendent or?
And with medical documentation.
Yeah, which of those do you, you can have one without the other or you can have both.
Well, I think we should have the first.
I'm just asking.
And what do we, what do we have?
At the request of the superintendent and with medical documentation.
So are you waiting for the superintendent to request?
I, yeah, this, this doesn't make, yeah, this doesn't make, no, it doesn't make any sense. But I, I'm just saying.
I'm like, I don't, this doesn't read correctly.
I was just making sure.
No, to my mind, there may be times when the board would need to see, say there's some incapacitation, but I also think it wouldn't have to come to us unless the superintendent. I think a superintendent who's going through a severe medical
Right, he could say, hey, I've got something going on.
That's what I'm thinking when I saw the first box.
I have a question. Define incapacitated. So for instance, if someone has, like it's not physical, like what if someone has a mental health crisis of some sort and they are not in the state to make that request or decision, would we, would that fall under incapacitated and would we be bound by that person requesting?
That's what I was saying. I would recommend a nine. That does not preclude the super from coming up and saying, hey, I have an issue going on, I'm gonna be, not likely to be in the best spot for the next month.
But we don't want to put ourselves in a position where they have, they have to request. Because we also have clauses where we can take action over this while in contract.
No, so I would, I would suggest, this, this is what I was suggesting. What we have currently is the second upon certification of, of physician selected and compensated by the board. That's what we currently have. That is also in, that's been in the superintendent's contracts also. What I was, I was saying is also have the first one at the request of the superintendent and with medical documentation. So you know, if someone who's going through cancer, whatever.
Right.
That means, right. That they should be able to come to us with a serious health need. Is there, is there a conflict to have both of those?
Well, if we don't put it in, they can still do it.
Yeah, they can always do that.
Okay.
Putting it in binds us to the boards.
Okay, so then, so then if we do the second checkbox with the first, I don't like the two other, I think it needs to be selected and compensated by the board, which is what we have right now, the physician.
What if second checkbox with the first parentheses, what if they don't take our medical coverage?
It's paid for by us, so we select.
It's paid for, we still select them.
Okay.
And it has nothing to do with
You mean to, to, to prove that it's a, okay, thank you. Because if we do the second one, then they're picking their own doctor.
Yes.
And the third one seems highly complicated. So the second box in the first parentheses, which is what we have currently, right?
I, I mean, I really like our policy, guys. Have you looked at our policy and read our policy? I'm not, the only thing
So there's not really any change?
Well, no, I just think that the only, the policy that we have is a pretty good one. It kind of covers all the basics and I do think we need to add that we won't interfere with any rights available under the Family Medical Leave Act, but I don't know that we necessarily want to adopt all the NEOLAs on this one.
I just, I'm just worried about like how hyper-specific some of this language in NEOLA is by the way.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Like our policy is pretty good. I would go back and just look at it and read it.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's, I think it might put us in a weird situation.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm with you. Lean back up. Let's, let's keep what we have, but with the Family Medical Leave Act, which is, that's not the statute that's referred, that's, that's a federal law, right? Because the other thing is a lot of these things that are in here, that they're in their suggestions are things that get worked out in a contract.
Right.
And we do have an incapacity provision.
Which is, right, which is binding, but it's not, but it's not, you know, it's negotiable.
Whatever you guys want to do here, anybody gets incapacitated, anybody will handle a situation based on how, like getting doctors and everybody else. I think it's good, but I'm okay.
The way we have it.
The way we have it, just add the Family Medical Leave Act.
Literally however you guys want it, as long as it's within law, like Ms. Jenkins appropriately said, we're good.
All right, we're good.
The next one has an extra one, Katie? Okay, I knew there were some that like they have that we don't have and it's the next two. So they have a 1060, oh, that's elected.
Elected.
Oh, yay. Moving right along, they have an 1111, designation of a new position. I don't know that we need, not, because we, or we have this somewhere else.
We don't have elected superintendents, so.
Yeah, I'm 11, I'm on 1111.
There was a 1060, you guys are good, getting past that.
It has to do with elected.
All right, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, no, we've, we've moved past that. And it also talks about a policy 1600, which we don't have.
I don't think we need this, but that's just me.
Yeah, we
I don't think we need this either.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we looked at it first. I mean, we do this when we, every time we do a new job description.
Okay, we're good?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, I'm glad this is
Next one is 112. Yeah, this is one. Had some notes on. All right, who wants to open up for discussion? Okay, I'll start.
Just so you know, NEOLA hasn't changed since 2002 on this one. So this is, if we're gonna make changes, this needs
Second C, which we, I did not see.
We don't have, right. Nor does it stay close to statute.
I thought C was weird.
Again, so
Oh, sorry, sorry.
No, 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 you want to go?
Yeah, I just I, we, we saw a significant shift in communications recently and I didn't like it. And I'm, I'm pretty confident, no one in the staff liked it either. We heard a lot about getting rid of bureaucracy and I felt like we increased it because there was no freedom to communicate. We have, we don't have the authority to direct staff to do things, but we should have the authority and the right to communicate with staff. And there was a point where I had a very specific question for a very specific person who did that job and it wasn't for the, to do any work for me, it was just to explain something to me. And that person wasn't at liberty to answer it because they felt like they had to go through their supervisor and that supervisor and that person to get to the superintendent then to come back to me. I believe that one of the benefits and why we functioned so well, and I can only speak to when I've been on the board because I don't know it as an employee, I felt like the open communication between all staff members and the board and the superintendent was really beneficial and it was way more effective and efficient and it got rid of bureaucracy, as well as certain members of our cabinet speaking directly to the superintendent, which we, we have a barrier in place now because of the rework. I don't like that. I don't think that's beneficial to our, to our organization. And so I want the policy to reflect that.
I'd agree with you. There's many requests that I've made for information and stuff like that that I still don't have, that are over 60 days long.
And it's not the staff's fault, right, right.
And I, and I, I know that if I was about to the staff, they would have told me that they provided that information a day or two after I made the request. So there's, there's a significant need here to allow us to communicate, you know what I mean, on an open basis. And I think the only thing that I would ask is, is that in the event that the question the superintendent needs to do or should be involved, you just CC him on an email or something like that, just making sure they know. But holding back the answers to where they, you know, I don't think like that's appropriate. We used to have a good standing conversation where I could call people and talk to them and it wasn't a big deal because then we would always just tell it after we went through and say, hey, here's what I was discussing, here's what it is. And if you had an issue, you would call us and we would just say, hey, what's wrong? Like it was good.
There literally was a moment where there was a staff member that had to ask permission to meet with me and I was like, no, 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 no. Like that's not how this works. Like I, I want you to meet with me because I want you to educate me on what you're doing. And again, it was no one's fault in that chain of command because that was the directive coming from the top, but it just, it didn't make sense. It wasn't efficient. And quite frankly, it put more of a burden on the administrators of all of those staff members to have to constantly relay and keep up with all of the questions that were being asked of their staff.
And then it had to come through Tammy and
Right.
So I, I would I'm gonna be in the middle. No, I, I absolutely, the last couple of months has been very frustrating and there have been times when I'm like, hey, can I get an answer to this? And I'm like, well, it's sitting, I sent it, it's sitting in the document.
That is exactly what I'm saying.
But there's also protection for staff in this and Sue can testify or not testify as she wants to, in that there should be a limit. I mean, there are some times that we, we may come and not just ask, hey, can you, can you answer this question? But we're, you know, there should be a limit. It still needs to go through. And I, I would, the, the staff members, the cabinet in particular or any employee, because they aren't, they aren't our direct employees, right, should have the ability, if we present something that is like, do I really have to do this? To go back to superintendent and say, do I really have to do this? You know, so, so, but, but what, what's been happening lately, yeah, it's just crazy. And I, I have called and said, or we've, you know, I just had an email, we all did have a few and I had one just to me yesterday and I shot one off to Carol about veterans issue and I, you know, tripped one off to Jane, hey, I got this from my parent, can you handle this? And now I'm just having, I mean, I haven't stopped doing that because of the people who handle it. You know, I'm not asking, you know, that's, I'm just getting it going in the right direction.
Can I interject? I think what you're saying is a little different than what this policy is supposed to be directed for. So that's almost like a board request versus board communication with staff. So I, I agree 100% with you, Ms. Jenkins, on this one. Open communication, I really feel is, it is needed. I think when it comes to board requests, I understand that barrier there of saying, hey, and again, you know, the smart sheet, the way that we've incorporated to where all board members are able to see the requests so that we can all gather that same information and maybe we, we aren't asking the same question multiple times to the same staff. There's a benefit in that, but this really just has to do with communications. So I think when we look at communications, we really do need to break down all those barriers that all, all staff has the ability to communicate with anyone in the district. I'm always concerned when someone says, don't tell them or don't speak to or don't, like that's a red flag for anybody. So I think we need to rewrite this policy to reflect, that would be my personal opinion, open communication.
For me personally, it's not, it wasn't, it isn't just requests. It was requests, but, and also, and communication, because it was simple things as, it wasn't a request that would produce some kind of document or result. It's really like a simple like, hey, what do you think about da, da, da? Or hey, do you know so and so? Like I couldn't even, those simple conversations.
Yeah.
Which is, which is frustrating and I think it's important for our staff to see it and know it, that it's okay to do it, so.
The hesitant, just another hesitation, just because I, I don't want us to, because we have something, a particular situation fresh in our minds, we have, you know, human nature is to knee jerk. I don't want us to knee jerk. There is a possibility of this being abused in, because we're picturing the situation we've just come off of. But there's a possibility that I think it would, it could be inappropriate for a staff member to come to the board, almost to lobbying and going around the chain of command, you know?
Sure. I think, I think
I don't agree with that.
I think what you're saying, if I may, because I think we're hitting this, this cloud that you're speaking to in multiple areas, right? The requests, the staff. What ends up happening is, is that regardless of it, how we regulate it, it's always gonna happen. So like, for instance, I spent many years in the district prior, so many of my friends that were teachers are now administrators, now in transportation, now like the bus driver that drove me to is now one of the directors. So the issue is that you have that relationship, so you're always bouncing stuff, right? I think it behooves the school, each one of the school board members to allow the superintendent to know if there's a discussion that is like beyond, outside the scope of request. And I think it behooves us to, as individuals, if somebody makes that request, to let the superintendent know. I think that's a respect level. But I think that some of the other things that, it to like requests for information and stuff like that, like me, I was told that I shouldn't make public records requests for the things because then it went through public records requests and there was like student data and stuff like that. So they asked me just to ask it as a board member. So there's, there's some of those directions and stuff like that, but I would say where you're going is 100% right, because we've had situations where, you know what I mean, it starts getting wonky. I think it's the respect of the superintendent. So I think that CC and letting them know what's going on is respectful.
Yeah. I just, you know, I, and you're right, anything, any situation can be abused and somebody can take advantage of it. What is our expectation? So, so then I would just say, what, what, how would you want it to be changed? We don't have recommendations from NEOLAs, besides the social interaction thing, which I think is just, like I read through, I'm like, why do we have to put that in there? That's weird. But what recommendations would you guys have? To me, what we had before was, we had this as a policy, but as practice, the superintendent said, you have the freedom to talk to whoever you want, right? You know, and obviously we have in our school, we're working guidelines that we have, you know, that we're going to bring concerns. We're not just gonna hold on to, we're gonna bring them directly to the superintendent because the superintendent needs to be caught off guard. We don't need to be walking into a board meeting with somebody's concern and that's the first time that the superintendent hears about it. I know Sue would especially appreciate that over the next couple of months. So I don't know, and we haven't asked Sue, you know, her thoughts. I'd like to ask, you know, as a cabinet member, what your take is.
So the, the practice that we had in place has, had generally been act like a professional.
Right? Be responsible.
And just be responsible. You know, I realize you can't confide that, but
We could just have the shortest policy ever.
If someone asks a question that you have a sense, this is gonna be a board discussion, you answer it and you copy all the board members. If you ask a question about, you know, what color shoes I had on today, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, it's just a conversation. So all of us at the cabinet level, I think most of our administrators use good judgment in terms of our communication with board members and making sure that the superintendent knows. As a, as a staff member, even as a director, I occasionally would communicate with the board and I would always copy the superintendent and I generally copy senior staff so that everybody knows what everybody's saying. And I think that that's just good professional practice and good transparency. And so the, the way this is written through the superintendent or as directed by the superintendent, you may have superintendents with different, different perspectives on how to do this, but I, I feel like we're adults and professionals and we should act that way. And that generally had worked fine in the past.
Yeah, because pretty much when we're not, that's when it goes, when a board member's not acting appropriately.
I'm gonna use this policy though in a different context because being a brand new school member and going to my schools, what I've found is that a lot of my administrators would resist to speak to me. And I don't know if it's because direction from the district was, this is our policy, talk through, you know, I, probably it was a combination of multiple things, but I think it's important that we clearly say that there is, you know, one thing I've learned is common sense isn't as common as we would hope for. So I think we need to spell it out here, that they have open access to board members to, I mean, you can, we can reiterate, the board cannot make a decision on their own. So the board as a whole operates, we operate together. That doesn't mean that somebody can't come to us and say, hey, I have something I need help with or I need to make you aware of. So I think we just need to make sure the policy
The first sentence, if you guys, so it says, the board desires to maintain open channels of communication between itself and the administrative staff. The basic line of communication will however be through the superintendent. I think that's where the issue is. Directives of staff is through the superintendent. What I feel like when we're saying the communication channel is through the superintendent, that's where that barrier comes in place. So like the first sentence says what we're trying to say.
Absolutely.
Could we add language to make it very clear that, you know, we don't, individual board members will not direct staff members to make changes or something like that. I mean, we could do that.
You could add a C for, to carve out directives and some, and board member requests, like board members will not direct staff to conduct any activities and any requests for information that are being consumed more than X number of hours. As estimated by the staff, we'll go to the superintendent for approval.
But here's the thing, by statutory law, you request something, it has to be completed. So if you request
I would say the board, yes, but where you could get in, like if you came to me and said, hey, Paul, can you go do this? And I say, that's gonna take me like four days of work time. I'm gonna come to the next board meeting and say, hey, I've gotten this request, it's gonna take me four days. Do you want me to devote four days of my time to do this? And at that point, the board would say, well, what's the information for? And the board would collectively direct.
Right.
That's the process, I think the super would use. He's like, if you make a request and staff's like, that's gonna take, you know, my office and two people a week to compile. And that's doing nothing else. So I'm shutting down my department and do this for one word. The super probably gonna call you all or bring it to the board meeting and say, do you want me to shut this department down to do this?
But then there's the other piece that they, we can just say, okay, and this is something that happened with Andy Zee earlier ahead of time, is that he would then just make public records requests. It has to be fulfilled. So it's like, we're gonna get it anyway. And I think the respect of, hey, this may not happen overnight.
Yeah.
Look, man, we need forty-five days.
At the end of the day, the board would probably say, what are you trying to get at and is there a narrower topic or if it's something there? All right, well, don't shut it down, but devote a couple hours a day and you'll get it in mine.
And there have been those kind of requests in the past. I will say to your point, Ms. Riley, when Andy was on, when I first came on the board, it was wide open. Like you could go into a school, they would lay out, hey, I've got this issue. I remember like my first meeting was at SunTrust and my kid was going, the principal at the time, amazing principal laid down, she said, I really want control of my dollars that my aftercare had, like it's been sent up to the district. And so we started this evaluation process and we came to a good agreement. I think that, but then what happened is, is that Dr. Blackburn slowly started cutting I think that, but then what happened is, is that Dr. Blackburn slowly started cutting that down to say, hey, just CC me, only go to the superintendent, assistant superintendents, you know what I mean? And then it slowly digressed into kind of where Schiller took it to the next level. So I would love open communication, everybody just not directives and not requests.
Can I make a suggestion for this one? So like, you know, we all agree on sentence number one.
Right.
But would this just be something that would be smart for staff to bring back to us? Because, and then obviously we can tweak it, but like staff are the ones who are really seeing the other side of this and doing it on a daily basis. They'll be able to wordsmith this a lot more effectively than we would.
Well, and another thing that we might wanna consider is, I mean, we, it's, this is our policy. Policy is our job.
No, I understand that.
But I, but I, you know, as a preface to what I'm about to say. We also have a superintendent coming on and we can, we can work something out with, with that person that, you know, is reasonable. Obviously, Neola doesn't have any other recommendation. Some of that, some of that that you talked about, like, is about the relationship that you have with, with people.
Cause you know, you have relationships with some of your principals.
I have relationships with all my principals, but I, some of them feel more comfortable sharing issues and some of them don't. And that's their personality, their experience, you know, the length of, you know, time they've been in their position or just, you know, really it comes back to person, personality and relationship. And they didn't necessarily have that with me right off the bat.
Right.
You know, and especially coming off of some conflict. And so I thought those are things that get built and, and some things that, you know, just, you know, they have to, there's a level of trust that has to be built so they don't think it's a gotcha, you know?
So particularly in, type of example to look at is, is that Dr. Schiller and I went to the agricultural rendezvous with all the big state reps, state senators and everybody, county commissioners. And inside of that, they had requested, they said as a group, with a lot of the state senators and everybody else, we would love to have more, add opportunities for clubs and stuff like that and pathways inside of Vermont Public Schools. So Schiller said to the gentleman that was there, I would love to do that. Who do I need to put in contact with? Let's create a meeting, right? So the individual went out, got all the people together, sent an email, started communicating. And then Dr. Schiller said that if you'll put that together, we'll do that. And so the guy that was there was an assistant principal in one of our schools. So he, but he's also on the board of the act. So Schiller gave him that direction and as soon as he started this communication and it started going to where there was gonna be a meeting, he got in a lot of trouble because he was told that you can't communicate directly. And it, it wasn't known until I figured out what it was and ran up on it. And I said, no, no, no. Dr. Schiller gave him the direction and all that other stuff. It was just kinda weird. So we just need to be able to say, look, if there's no serious requests, if there's, if it's collaborative and it's all that stuff, absolutely. Because many of the people that we have that we are friends with are also part of organizations that are also administrators and everything else. There's just gonna be communication, but I think if we're not giving directives and requests, I think that that's good.
Can you run back some ideas or do you want some?
Take the cabinet and see what the actions recommendations are.
Drop the policy.
And again, this is something that's a work in progress and practice is, the practice sometimes is there first and the policy follows, you know, the tail whacks the dog. But in this case, I think we, some of it is, we gotta figure out what works and what's professional. I don't, I'm not in favor of, it's like we've talked about some of the other policies, adding a bunch of words that are not necessary. But it sounds like we're wanting to maybe take some out.
Yeah, I'm like, I like the first sentence, boom, or drop the policy. Like I don't, that's, that's my personal preference is to make this-
I almost, I almost felt the same way too, like why do we even have this policy in place? If we're, if the, if the intention is for you to just be a professional, you can't really put that on paper. So why do we have this policy?
I do like, I think B is very important because, you know, our, once we establish, that is in any organization, that the board of a bank, the board of a business, whatever, or a nonprofit makes a decision and then the CEO of the organization communicates that to the staff. I think B is, is important because that's the-
And I think that changes the purpose of that policy, which makes more sense versus the communication, because it's more the directive. Communicating the directive versus communicating overall.
Right. All right, so what's the recommendation? Staff to look at this and come back and give us their feedback, right? I think the overall, it sounds like consensus of everyone here, Gina, I haven't heard you. Are you, are you?
I'm awake.
Open communication.
More copies.
That is, that's what I'm hearing everyone say. So however we get there, the simplest way with not a whole bunch of limitations on communicating, you know?
This would be an interesting conversation with the applicants.
Just to see what their thoughts are? Yeah, I mean, well, I guess that was, yeah.
I'm sorry to go back, I'm sorry to go back. But I found my notes from, from several weeks ago and I just wanted to go, can we go back to 1020 really quick?
1020?
Yeah, 1020. Our, I think we said in here that we mainly wanted to, is that the one we said? We wanted to keep our policy, what do we, are we gonna adopt Neola?
Neola, Dave.
Okay, because the one note that I had written, and I'm sorry, I've, I'm, to backtrack, I had written, our, our policy says, and fix this out in second paragraph, fix the salary term of office which shall be no, no more than four years. Obviously with elected, I, I don't, I think when we do a contract, I don't know that that's, that's not in the Neola recommendation. So that just seems a little strange for that to be in there. I mean, I guess that's, that would prohibit us if we had somebody that we wanted to hold on to.
Yeah, you could.
We could do five-year contract.
But you can renew the contract.
Like at the end, Dr. Mullins and even in my contract, as long as my evaluations are a certain level, it tacks on that extra year, so it's always three years.
Okay.
So that's how it was built and it's based on the evaluation.
Okay, so, so if we do a Neola, we're not gonna have that in there anymore. I just thought we needed to-
Right, so yeah, it'd be a board call.
Okay, but, but this doesn't say the contract will be known before. It actually almost sounds like it was an oopsie from the elected official because it says shall appoint them and their term of office which shall be no more than four years. To me, that says you can be our superintendent for four years. So if we adopt Neola, we can get rid of that. Okay, sorry, thank you. And then also, can you tell me what we decided to do on 1040 one more time? Where, are we doing?
Forty, uh, there were a whole bunch of check marks.
Okay. Our, right, our policy, I didn't know, are we going with Neola because our also, our policy-
We walked through Neola, you have it going as annually, then A and B.
Okay.
And then C with superintendent's effectiveness and following direction of the board.
And I'm sorry, I'm trying to catch this before. Ours has labels, strategic plan first in Florida, which is not the name of our strategic plan any longer and hasn't been for some time.
Yeah.
And so whatever, we merged that, we need to make sure that is eliminated. So sorry, now we can get back to track. My bad. Where are we?
We run-
The next, the next one that we-
We don't have it.
Yeah, Neola does.
Thirteen, yeah, that's, I know, that's what I'm like, we, this is one that we-
So this one right here reads, there's a couple of ways to determine this one. So what it says is, is that the policy itself reads that you cannot do business with an entity that does business with the school board, but the intent is to say that you can't do business with a company that's doing business directly with it. So I'll give you guys an example. So I, I am a insurance broker who does business with multiple insurance companies throughout the, insurance carriers throughout the state of Florida, right? I don't have any business that will do anything ever with Vermont Public Schools nor will I ever be tied to them. But those entities are also part of other jobs that I do. So it's a difficult thing. So what Paul has said is, is in those cases legally, I'm supposed to always say, you know, I stand away from speaking to this on any issue, plus the fact that I have to respond to not vote for any issue. I think, Paul, if you can give an explanation inside of there about that.
Yeah, well, I mean, your capacity is a little different as a board member. This would go to all employees as well, but yeah, I always recommend abstaining and just declaring a conflict.
Yeah, so, so the idea is, is that, just so that everybody understands, like if you're doing business with a company that's doing business with the school district, you have to more break any kind of contractual relationship that might exist there. But the other thing is, is that you just basically don't talk to any item that goes related to that stuff.
Or it's only, yeah, there could be a, especially flag for staff. I mean, there are prohibitions in the ethics code about even doing business with the district. So there's red flags there that get raised. And there are exceptions if they're like, if you're doing something with every plumber in the county and you put it out, all plumbers are gonna be signed up, there're gonna be assigned contracts rotationally. You can do that, it's okay with the conflict, because everybody's getting that public business at once anyways. So there are exceptions, but it is one of those areas where you don't wanna play around and give a complaint or report a commission on ethics.
Yep. So if we want to accept this one, we can. If we don't, it's not a big deal. But just wanted to kinda explain that in context, that's all.
Do we have this language, do we have this-
It applies to the district through statute.
Right.
That's why it's the ethics code that's cited at the bottom. So it is there, this is just more putting everybody on notice of the express. And that's what a lot of these ethics will be, is just taking the ethics code and putting it in your policies.
I actually think this is a good one.
I, I don't dislike it. I mean, I think it's-
I think we have similar language in other places.
Yeah.
Like in our ethics and that people have to sign. I see Dr. Green kind of nod her head, but just to lay this out specifically. We also have the option of doing the second one, if, which if I'm understanding that, it's kind of a lobbying thing.
Well, that's just saying two years past your, right? Isn't that what the, so it's a relevant to say?
That is a great statute to say that you will no longer do business with the school district afterwards because it, there is too many ties that I've seen throughout legislators, throughout county commissioners, that immediately after they're done, they find some sort of a sweetheart deal and land there. That ain't right.
This is a lobbying, it's a lobbying thing because it says may, may, no one may personally represent before the board another person, so that's, I think that's definitely a lobbying, right?
That would, well, it would even prohibit me from coming, representing someone that's before an administrative hearing before the board or going to VMT and representing the VMT.
Oh, because you know the inner workings of our organization. Can it be longer than two years?
Not statutory, little.
So this is basically, because I know state statute has it for-
And it's in state statute too.
Right, but, but it's an option then, so it's the option that we don't, we-
You don't have to have it in your policy, because like you don't have to have the policy, but you can select it so that everybody's on notice.
Yeah, I think it's good. I think we can add it in there. Let's put it in.
I love it.
Let's do it.
Okay. I think there's another one in between.
There's two more.
Yep.
Eleven twenty.
So we have eleven twenty on the Neola. It deals with employment of administrators.
So the, the phone company's supposed to be coming to my house and they've got my number and my husband's number, so if I run out that far.
So if I can say, this, this has multiple state statutes that are added in here. It also has been updated in 2022 and then Tammy modified it in 2023. I would say that there's a lot of references to statutory law here. I'm not against putting this in, but I'd love to hear you guys' conversation.
I'm opposed to putting it in, but there's just, if we do, there's just to heighten your awareness of, there's definitely language in here that would absolutely have to be modified pretty soon when it talks about the general knowledge test, temporary certificates, things like that. I mean, that's all stuff that's being discussed in the legislature right now.
Yeah, I don't know, and we might need to defer to Dr. Green on this one, but there's actually in this, even in the second paragraph, and, and maybe we do this indirectly, but it says the board shall approve employment, which we do, determine the compensation, which we do on a scale, and establish the term of employment for each administrator appointed by the board. It's annually, okay, so because we had it says annually, that's not a problem, okay. Have you, have you taken a look at this one from Neola?
Just, just briefly.
Okay.
But yeah, you do do that.
Any thoughts? I mean, so you're saying we do do that, we just don't have, it's not like we're doing it. Okay, this principal, you get to be a principal for two years and this one gets to be, we're just saying.
We have not traditionally done two-year contracts for administrators. There are, you're allowed to do a two-year contract, but we, everybody's an annual contract with our-
Any thoughts on this one? I mean, obviously it would come back, I would have to come through you and-
So I, I, the temporary certificate and ed leadership, we don't do with our principals, with our approved principals, like an acting principal. We have some people that are not, have the full certification, but they're just a temporary. They're filling in for someone, they're acting, they don't qualify for the permanent job.
And haven't we done, like we'll appoint sometimes an interim principal because they're in the process of getting that and then it comes back to us and it changes from interim to-
Yes.
Principal because they've, we've gotten their certification.
And traditionally, that's an out-of-state person, like I started in an interim state because this, even though I was certificated, I had a school leadership thing with Florida. There, I didn't have the ed leadership because you have to put in a year and-
That's the, and that's the next suggested policy is talking about that.
Yeah. I, I don't know. Just another one right before the general knowledge is that members of administrative staff are required to have listed telephones at their residences.
Like your cell phone.
So we, we do that.
I mean-
I mean, it's a cell phone though, it's not, it's still, yeah, it's still-
Yeah, I don't have a line at my house.
No one has a landline.
And that's actually new because when I set, the cell phone allowance is new because when I started, I had to specifically get a landline to meet that policy. That, that was back in thirteen.
Oh.
Now cell phones are okay.
What even answer?
I guess because during a storm or something?
Yeah, we had one at one point when we bundled, like you got the-
Yeah, you got a cheaper rate of care.
Free phone and they said, and all we got were telemarketers, so I said, I'm taking it out. I took it off the wall.
Nothing is free, right? Yeah. It is good if you have kids in the house, so for emergencies, unless they know how to unlock your phone.
Yeah, we got our oldest a cell phone.
Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna incorporate a policy with this number, it's gotta have a lot of work. I don't, I'd rather it be something that just codifies what we're actually taking.
Why don't we just say, why don't we just say, hey, staff, would you look at this for our, our existing policy? Bring it back to us if that's appropriate. That sound good?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
The ninety-seven day probationary period too, is that one?
That's statutory.
That's statutory, okay.
Okay.
And it sounds like the next one is exactly what Dr. Green was talking about.
Oh, that says interns though.
Intern principals and supervisors and stuff like that.
Right, and they have one in between.
They have one in between, so they have one for interim.
Yep, one, two, zero, one, one, two, zero, one, zero, one. Again, I think we could add this because it's got statutory references, but ask staff to look at it for our existing policy, you know what I mean?
We already have it somewhere else.
Yeah. Or if it's something in practice that we're doing that is different. Does that sound good, Paul?
Yeah.
Okay.
This part, our next one, looks nothing at all like Neola's.
Well, we have one, two, zero, six, right?
Yeah.
Here we go.
Selecting administrative-
I like ours better. Yeah, our one sentence is very good.
Yep, I actually like ours. Paul, it's the same reference. Are we okay with keeping that?
Honestly, it looks like theirs is actually getting into administrative procedure type language, which we don't, I was just looking, we don't have administrative procedure for that, but-
Like literally, this, this, I just see barriers all over this thing. Colleges and universities should first make contact with a superintendent regarding placement of administrative. I'm like, no, like, and like, this just red, red flags all over.
Yeah, so we're just gonna keep simple.
Keep our sentence, all right.
It's good.
Do we, do we, we've been doing statute as far as, I opened a different page, does ours have a statute?
It's the same exact statute.
Same one, okay, so we're good. Hey, I, again, backtracking, sorry. I was looking for administrative procedure and I, just for our awareness, the policy we were just discussing, Board Staff Communication, eleven twelve, actually has an administrative procedure. And it says, the board desires open channels, that statement, the basic line of communication will however be through the superintendent, that's on there. It says, from the staff to the board, as directed by the superintendent, district administrators are encouraged to have open communication with board members.
Okay.
That is in there. And then being district administrators shall keep the superintendent informed of the issue, problems, concern or action discussed during the communication. So if we have that open communication and a concern arises, then they should bring it to the superintendent, so.
But then that, that conflicts with what our current policy says though, does it not? I mean-
Maybe.
Definitely.
Maybe.
And absolutely does.
Something to look at. We also have, and we don't have to go back because I think it's fine, but we also have an administrative procedure attached to the evaluation, which will need to be updated because that one's not been updated since 2002. So we just need to make sure we're looking at those at the same time. Okay, so we're good. All right, the next, eleven twelve.
All right, one, one, two, zero, one, one.
That's preference for that.
You just approved that.
That was just-
We just got that one.
Yay, move it along.
Yeah.
All right, next up is one, one, two, one. Conditions for employment and reemployment of administrators.
Hang on, because I have, wait, our next policy is eleven seven.
Ours is eleven seventy.
Oh, so we did that, we, ours is never differently.
Well, when there's a bunch that are-
Neola has a bunch in-
Yeah, Neola has a bunch that you guys don't have, so we're not up there yet. We're still in eleven two, it's not the eleven seventies.
Right.
Right.
Which the majority of these are-
I know, but I'm saying, we, she just said we were doing it. We've already approved it, so where is ours?
No, the veteran one we just approved.
Yeah, it might not be, Neola may not have added it to our thing yet. We have to send it to Neola and then they have to update our website, so it might not be on board.
Okay.
So the veteran one we already did, but the next one is one, one, two, one. Conditions for employment and reemployment of administrators. I think this is again, another one we sent off to staff to take a look at to make sure that whatever our process is in place mirror it. And if we did, it has four references for statute, I think.
I think we need that one, honestly.
Sue has a finger up.
I think some of these are in sections in the House.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we have these in other places.
On that, it's- On that, it's because Neola is built for redundancies. So like, staff members will go to the staff policies. Students will go to the student policies, they will not go to staff policies. So like, we don't have a four thousand section at all. At some point in our history, the board completely removed the fours.
Whole section.
Yeah, the whole section. So when we get to the fours, you're gonna have the entire book to look at and say, do we want it? Because, and it will mirror a lot of the other policies, because Neola is built for that redundancy. So a student doesn't go to the student section, oh, it's not in there, so I don't have to worry about it. But it's somewhere else. And so Neola said, people will just go to the section that applies to them, and they're not gonna go look in the staff, because it says students don't do this.
But now that it's online, I mean, I don't know about you, but when I go there.
I use the search bar.
Yeah, that's the easiest.
But if it pops up as staff, are you gonna look at it that way? So I mean, I don't know.
So I.
That's how Neola is built, it just doesn't know.
So here's, so here's some of the things, right? Redundancy, doesn't hurt us, because all it is is it's online. It's like literally.
As long as what it says here is the same as what it says here, is what it says.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta know that it's a walkover to the three thousands and the four thousands and the five thousands.
Well, it does hurt us what we have to say. Is anyone here to speak to policy when we're adding it? Because there're gonna be like massive additions if you do that.
You gotta say it like months ahead of that.
Well, then one more fifteen.
I like the fact of putting it in there, and I'll tell you why. Even though it's redundancy, and even though I might have to run through these, and I'll be very quick to the point where if somebody doesn't like pop up out of their seat real fast, they're gonna, we're gonna move. But the thing is, is that I think that what you made was a very good point. Because when I look at certain areas, I say, okay, where's this? And then I review all of them, because there's other, sometimes words aren't used in searches, sometimes other verbs are used, or whatever it is, adjectives, however you wanna put it. I think, I would like to add it, even if it is redundant, the fact that it's on there. And we can check the other ones if we have a problem.
Are you talking about the BP one right now?
The one-one-two-one.
The BP one is on there, and it's exactly what you're talking about. It's thirty-one twenty-point-eleven.
Oh.
And not eleven twenty-point-eleven. It's on there.
No, this is eleven twenty-one.
The one that we just approved, she's named it.
I'm saying the BP one that you just spoke about.
Yeah, yeah.
We put it in the three thousands.
Yeah, because it's, that's staff, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it's under employment.
So that's probably a walkover policy that is in the ones and the threes. So if they, that's where their redundancies are built. You could go to the administrative policies and find it, as well as the staff policies and find it.
And I think, to be honest with you, if I'm an administrator coming in, I'm going to go to the administration and crump the entire thing, and say, okay, I'm gonna review them all. And I may miss them if I'm going over the staff.
If you're an administrator, there's a lot of policies you have to have on there, like all the student ones and, you know, they're responsible for a lot more.
But I would say that it doesn't hurt us to put it in there, it adds to it, you know what I mean? If that's okay with everybody.
Right, are you now, are you on eleven twenty-one? I don't think we need to put veterans' preference all over the place, because that's.
Right, no, no, eleven twenty-one, Conditions for Employment and Reemployment of Administrators, it's got four statutory laws to it. I feel like we can add that one. But I want staff to tweak what our practices are that are outside of statute. That would be my recommendation. And just in general, any of the ones that deal with the administrators that we may have referenced somewhere else, we can just add them for the other one, and just link them up.
Yeah, so what we have is thirty-one twenty-one, which is Conditions for Employment and Reemployment of Staff.
Right.
And I don't know that there's, I mean, look at it real quick, see if there's a separate section for administrators. There's not.
Accounted in policies.
There's four sections.
So these are ones that we don't have, but yeah, I know, I know.
I think, I think it works to put administrators here. That's all.
I think, I can't see a disadvantage of doing that, I mean, we have staff, that's a big word.
Right, we need to, so two things. We need to make sure that as we're looking, as they're looking at, that we are looking at and making them as parallel as possible. Do, we actually adjusted this policy last February to change the, about the references.
Which, Paul, not, we don't have this one.
The thirty-one twenty-one that we have is this staff.
I got it.
Because we were, that was becoming a barrier, a roadblock for employment, because if people had to have the references, we said, can we lower it? And so now we have two references, but they're administrators responsible to call them, whatever. So we might wanna.
Yeah, that's why I said if we wanna.
If we wanna have it different for administrators, because that's a little higher.
This one has three references on there, separate references, so maybe that one should be elevated.
Right, so that was something that can bring to us. And I don't know what our, right now.
Because where we ran into that was like bus drivers' custody and stuff like that.
Right.
Right, right.
And here you have an administrator, you're like, well, if you've gotten to this level, then you shouldn't have employment.
Right.
Last three people, you know what I mean? I think that's good.
But it needs to mirror as much as possible within reason.
But I think that just made case per point for adding it into the administration section, so. Paul, I guess the directive is, is.
See with staff.
See with staff, see where it is otherwise, but add it. All right, okay, here we go. One-one-two-one-point-zero-one, background screenings.
We have.
These are all in the three thousands.
That's what happened.
This one's consistent. This one you can use in the other one, because it's specific to that, it's not saying.
This is all employees, this is not administrator, I don't think we need that.
I'm good with this.
Like the next bunch of them are not, because they're really just very much statute.
So we're good?
Non-discrimination we have, yeah, I think.
We have that.
These are all under our, under a section.
One-one-two-one, non-discrimination and equal employment. Again, this is a general that we may have somewhere else.
We definitely do.
So if we're okay with keeping what we have somewhere else, it's, they, you know what I mean?
We have one about genetic information.
We do, it's policy three-one-two-two.
Okay.
For us.
Yeah, okay. Anything that's not gonna be different for administrators than it is for other employees, I think we need to, we don't need to add.
I think, yeah, all of these.
Because the same thing with drug-free workplace.
Right.
We have a drug-free workplace policy that is not specific to administrators. And it also could be different districts, one, I'm assuming, also want to put these different places.
Okay, yeah, Neola is just designed to be redundant.
So you can have flexibility to do it for everyone.
Yeah.
Right.
If you don't want them.
To me, this fits in the three thousands, which is employment or employees.
Conflict of interest, I'm like, I'm going through these, we have these, they're just in different places. I mean, I think to be fair, the redundancy, I can see the issue if it's like student, or, you know, versus staff administration, but like administrators are still staff as well, too. So like those, I feel like it's pretty logical that people would check out.
Non-discriminating across the board, we're not gonna, we're not discriminating in certain.
Right, and we already have our drug-free workplace employment contract, eleven twenty-eight. That's, pretty sure we have, that's not separate.
They're all there, all the way, you can keep going.
In the three thousands.
Three thousands. And it's exactly the same number, except the first digit is three instead of one.
Okay, thanks, Carol.
Okay, yeah, appointments.
It's all the same. All right, so we can jump up to eleven seventy?
That's the one.
Substance, or records and, our eleven seventy is records and reports. Eleven seventy from them is substance abuse.
Yeah. Oh, hang on, there's one, one.
You got one in there? One.
Eleven thirty-nine-point-oh-one, we, is maybe considered, because that is specific to administrators? I don't know.
And the next one, which is suspension or dismissal.
So we have staff discipline, which is under our three thousands, so.
We have employee misconduct and staff, and it covers all employees across the district, and it's all based in statute.
Yeah, if you don't know one, you need to find out.
Okay, so we're good?
We're good there.
Okay.
Suspension and dismissal of administrators, is that, because they're non-bargaining, any difference?
We have suspension and dismissal of staff.
Staff.
But staff is a little bit different, because each.
Under it, it has administrators and instructional employees.
Okay, if we're okay with that, okay. Okay. We ready for eleven seventy?
Which theirs is titled eleven eighty, I don't know if we want it to reflect the same, just to make it easier for searching purposes. Ours is policy eleven seventy, but that policy on Neola is policy eleven eighty.
You see what's going on, Paul?
Yeah, eleven seventy under Neola is substance abuse, yeah.
So if we can just change the number to reflect Neola, I think that's appropriate. The others, the others, eleven seventy and eleven seventy-point-zero-one are all like staff-related issues.
What is their number, eleven, records and reports?
Their is eleven eighty.
Theirs is eleven eighty, that's what I'm saying, the number's different, so.
So if we're okay with that, and then there's, there's some additional information.
Yeah, I think this one should probably reflect what this.
So can I say eleven seventy is incorporated into thirty-one twenty-four? Thirty-one twenty-four is our drug-free workplace policy, and it's all in there?
Okay, okay.
Neola's eleven seventy, yeah, okay.
You know, everyone's gonna go, what?
We were trying to talk about getting our policy number lined up with Neola's.
With Neola's, right, because our policy, eleven seventy, says records and reports, not drug-free workplace.
So if you look at this, it has an entirely different statutory reference. It has some other stuff.
Which one are we looking at now?
We're looking at.
Eleven eighty.
Eleven eighty.
It is eleven seventy.
Okay.
So the first change is to change the policy number to reflect Neola's.
Okay.
The same.
But it speaks to administrators right off the bat. It has Florida statute one-zero-zero-one. I, if we're okay with asking staff to review it, it was updated in 2022, so there's probably some laws that are wrapped into there.
Yeah.
If that's okay, Paul, if you'll check with administrative staff and make sure, I think we can get through this one pretty quickly.
Yeah, agreed.
All right. Next one is. Standards of Ethical Conduct, I think we have with the staff, that's more appropriate. Whistleblower Protection, that's one that I'd like to talk about, but if we've got it in another place, we can get to it when we get there.
We just actually revised that in the, we talked about that in service.
Sorry, which one?
The whistleblower.
Are you incorporated the whistleblower into?
No, I think whistleblower may be a.
One that you're bringing to us, that we talked about yesterday, Tuesday.
There's some change, there's some difference in the standards of ethical conduct.
Thirty-two-eleven.
Okay.
Standards of Ethical Conduct, we brought to your workshop on Tuesday, it's coming back to rulemaking and the approval.
Okay, standards of ethical conduct is, okay.
Okay, that's good.
Good, because I have a lot of notes written all over the screen, but that must have been before.
Whistleblower Protection, okay, so in Neola, we're at one-two-one-one. We have not, we're just going.
Oh, sorry, this, my policy book is.
No, no, that's okay, so if I can review, we were on eleven seventy, that we then turned into eleven eighty. Said that staff can take a look at that, all that stuff, right?
Right, we skipped past all the rest of those, because those are in ours.
And then we moved on to Standards of Ethical Conduct, but she said that that is inside of a later policy that is reflective to staff.
Right.
Whistleblower Protection should be in the same type, right?
It's in thirty-two-eleven.
I was gonna say, we don't have that policy.
You do it thirty, in thirty-two-eleven is where it's found.
We can get it there, and I think that's appropriate to have, so that everybody can review it.
Okay.
Student Supervision.
That's in thirty-two-thirteen.
Okay, go, one-two-one-one.
Do we have? What policy, do we have a separate whistleblower policy, or is it just incorporated?
Thirty-two-eleven is a whistleblower policy.
Yes, yes, okay.
It's verbatim the same.
So we don't need two whistleblower policies?
Right.
Yes, okay.
Student Supervision and Welfare.
Same thing, like thirty-two-thirteen.
There you go. Solicitation and Acceptance of Gifts from Unauthorized Compensation, that should be the same thing, too, correct?
It's thirty-two-fourteen.
Yes, okay, we caught it.
What I'm saying is, is we're going to see this again.
Yeah, it's coming back.
So if we're okay with.
And I'd rather keep it in the three thousands.
Smoking and tobacco, I think that's there, too.
Thirty-two-fifteen.
Dress code and grooming.
Yep.
We have that.
Weapons.
We don't have weapons.
Do we have weapons?
We do have weapons, it's not, they.
But it's not in threes. Maybe.
Seventy-two-seventeen.
Property.
Okay.
And I will note on that one, I don't know if you wanna wait till you get to it later. We did not exercise the authority under seven-ninety-one-fifteen, so I don't know if that's something you guys wanna consider.
The hell would you just say?
Yeah.
Because you told us, he said we didn't have.
If you open up the twelve-seventeen weapons, which is probably the same as the seventy-two-seventeen, we did not exercise that seven-ninety authority at any point, that's just something for you guys to think about.
The guardians.
The guardians.
No, no.
No, is that what that is?
It's storing weapons in your vehicle. So you could have staff right now with guns in their cars.
Yeah.
Oh, the option is to prohibit them, no.
By statute, the board is allowed to make your entire property free.
Thank you.
So they are not allowed to store them in their cars, I'm just letting you know that.
Right now, they're currently not allowed to.
They are.
No, they are, they are allowed to, sorry.
If disgruntled employee run out to their car, get their gun, run back into the school while they have a badge and access, and shoot the school. So, or yeah, they could run out during an active shooter, get their gun.
Well, they shouldn't be running out of the building, because the procedure is that you don't run out of the building.
If someone has a concealed carry license, if we had checked that option, then they would just have to leave it at home.
Okay.
And even.
They are not allowed to store it in their vehicle.
Right.
Perfect.
That's it, I'm just letting you know.
We're allowing it.
So if somebody.
It was a big deal, like, I think a couple years ago.
Many, many corporations don't allow it for that exact reason, because of disgruntled employees going to their cars.
And that is true, but when you look at the amount of, you know what I mean, instances of, or the issue that we're trying to talk about, I don't know any that is a staff member that left and came back, you know what I mean? And that's usually the postal service.
No, just.
That's in the eighties.
That's why it's there, though.
I'm just letting you know that you never did that, so it's something to keep in the back of your head.
Sounds good, okay. So Weapons is done, twenty, twelve-twenty, Evaluation of Administrative Personnel, I think we can add that one.
I think it's thirty-eight.
Yeah, they're all under the three thousands.
But this one speaks to administrators, do we wanna just?
Is it because we have it thirty-two, or are there, there's, it's the same?
I think when you're talking about.
It also is separated.
It says personally.
Administrative is the first, instructional personnel is the second, and support personnel is the third.
I would say, though, that being the fact that we wanna make sure that the administrators are in here, you know what I mean? That this is a good piece to put inside. Consistent with what we've been doing is, is that if we wanna add it, because it says Evaluation of Administrative Personnel, and I hear. of administrative personnel, and I hear, I hear Ms. Green, but I also would say that this, you know what I mean, would be good to put in here with all the other administrative policies. As long as it's staff, I mean, it's got seven references for statute and code. So if you guys are okay.
I don't know if it, I don't know if I agree in the redundancy part for this one, I don't think it's necessary to be redundant. Which number are you on, sorry, okay, wait, 11, or 1220?
1220 is the same as 30.
The only reason that I say it is, is because the administration is always evaluated differently than the others, and, like your other class codes, and then on top of that, if I'm an administrator or somebody that wanted to look, you can see that this is the administration section, so.
Here's a yep to you guys, if you want to.
If it's literally verbatim, we're covered with the way that it's handled, the same, right, I mean, if it's in here somewhere, it's just not maybe under that section, it's still covered.
It's under staff, we have a staff.
So if we just, all it is is agreeing, putting it in a different place, which is Neola's suggestions, because they have it in multiple places.
We don't mirror Neola in this one, though.
Yeah, the thing about, the conversation I had earlier is, Neola is putting all replace, not just to create their identity, but also to give district school boards options, and how they want to divvy it out, you know? We, like Paul said, we don't have a 4000, I don't know what 4000 is going to be, but.
Yeah, I don't remember.
It's, you know, our 3000s is labeled staff, so everything has to do with staff. And administration, the 1000, it's administration, but it's not all about administrators, sometimes it's just about the administration of the district, including the superintendent and cabinet and communications.
And I would say that how you currently have it set up, and you've left more employees up under the.
Under the staff section, yeah, when it comes to evaluations.
But it's how this board wants to design their policy.
Every policy that we add isn't, and we have to review within five years, just saying. I just, so, yeah, I feel like, do we take a minute to just, like, look back on what this, what this section really is? I think, to me, it's easier to consume as an employee and probably even as an administrator, that anything related to your role as a staff member is under staff.
Under staff.
To your employment, not your duties necessarily.
Right.
They're specific to you.
They're different, but if you guys want to put it under the other one, it's fine by me.
It's there right now, I think obviously it needs a lot of updating just to make sure that it falls in line with this one, because the Neola's policy is significantly different than what we have for the evaluation process for administrators, so.
We updated ours in 2021, I'm sure that had to do with some statute changes.
I mean, my vote would be, don't put it the same, same thing in two different spots, I mean, it's just one more policy in this section.
So we're good and move on?
Yeah, the next one's 1231, outside activities for administrators, this speaks to administration working on other places, private entities while they're in business.
And I think we have. That.
What policy number are you on, sorry? I think you can give me the number.
1231, Neola.
We do not have a 3231, but outside. Do we have something like this, Carol, outside activities of administrators?
And some of the things are covered in the ethics policy.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna say, some of it looked familiar.
Some of this deals with dual employment, right? Or having a second job or something.
Yes.
I think this is where it just kind of goes a little differently, I think this should go under the 3000s, but we definitely need to incorporate it.
If you guys want to push it to the 3000s, when we get there, we can do that, because that would encompass.
It'll probably be in their templates.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm guessing it's a walkover, I don't have the 3000 yet.
Okay. We just want to make sure that we have, make sure if we don't have, there's something in here that we don't have addressed as far as outside employment activities, we need to make sure that it's somewhere.
I'm making a note on my 3000 check sheet, so that way when we get there.
We can be so organized.
Make sure they're all in there. All right, so research and publishing, political activities, I'm just reading down, none of these pertain directly to administrators, and I'm not sure if they are in our other policies.
We have a policy on research.
Yep, I remember that, political activities.
I think that's under the nines, instead of the threes.
I would rather say, like, political activities for all of staff, you know what I mean, those kind of things.
Yeah, that is.
I don't think saying it for only administrators. Professional development, professional meetings, I think those both seem, 1242 and 1243, I think are specific to.
Oh, actually, sorry, I'm not saying we have to have it, but this 1232, just let's look at the first sentence. State law says, "Administration of staff members who are employed by school board shall not participate in any political campaign for elective office while in duty."
That's statutory.
That's statutory, but that's not something that's going to apply to others, other staff.
What are you looking at, sorry, which policy?
I mean, Neola's 1232.
1232, I want 1242.
You can't, like, on duty, being, like, while working.
Like, you can't be at school.
Not after school. I know, but, oh, while in duty, okay, nevermind.
They can't be at school.
What'd you think?
I'm like, we got people doing.
Your sign in your yard.
I got you.
No, I gotta see, I think, for some of them, no, no, sorry.
I think.
It's almost lunchtime, guys, my ledger is dirty.
I was trying to, look, I counted them, I thought we'd get done by 12.
We're like, but then there's like 100 in here in between, so.
Which we're almost there.
We're almost there, I think, now, we're, let's finish strong, we're almost there.
Is political activities addressed in a later statute?
We do not have a 9232, I'm looking for the three.
There's a figure, do.
We have a supporting political candidate policy.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we have.
It's in there, for sure. I read it before I read, because I was scared I was gonna get in trouble.
Yeah, because it's very clear, like, in a state statute, they can't take, can't take money, like, you can just stand out in the parking lot and get a check, but, or something, you can't collect money from candidates on school property, that's all.
All right.
All right, so now, professional development, we have that under, that's our 3000s.
Yep.
Okay, I lost where my numbers are.
Sorry, we're at 1242.
1242 and 1243 are both specific to things that I think we have in later work.
Carol, you have a 1242.
We do have a 1242. Well, we have a.
A ball, too many tabs.
Yeah, I have too many tabs, do my computer, like, what?
1242 is professional development, yeah, okay, yeah.
We do have that.
And it, ours was last revised in 2011, and theirs was last revised in 2019.
With a review modified in 2023, it's got about the same amount of statutory references, they seem to be exactly the same, so if you guys are okay with just saying that as long as our procedures don't conflict with this piece, I think we can start there, and then it has one checkbox that we can add if we.
There's this, a lot longer.
Yeah, there's a significantly different. I think we need to adopt Neola's, because we don't.
Or look.
Well, there were things that were missing that I wrote on here, so, in the first paragraph, we need to add teachers, business community representatives, we're missing things that Neola has in there.
Just so you know, we also have a 3242, professional development, and I don't know if they're identical, but, no, actually, 3242 is a little bit longer.
Sorry, I know you were trying to get out there.
No, our 3242 is professional development, and it's longer.
Is it Neola's 1242?
Yes. So that's the problem, is with the redundancy, they're not going to go to all areas.
They didn't update, they didn't update the 12, but they updated the 32.
So then should we get rid of the 1242 and just have it under staff for the 3000s?
You want, you can do that.
I think that makes this process a lot easier, because if we have to update two policies or three policies, it's the same thing in three different spots every five years, that seems crazy, so.
So I would suggest.
And the one in the 3000s was updated in 2014.
I would suggest that we do it at the same time, so when we get ready, if we're going to repeal 1242, that we need to update 3242 at the same time, because we don't need to.
Oh, all right.
Because that one needs to be looked at.
Repeal 1242 next to it, so when we get to that policy, so leave this one alone until we get there, is that what we're thinking?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay, move on. Next one is.
Professional meetings.
Yeah, professional meetings, is that addressed later on?
No, we don't have a 32.
No, we don't have a 3000, so that's, the board encouraged us to change our system to, to increase the benefits. This will be a 3000s policy, honestly.
Why do we need this?
Yeah, I don't think we need to be there, honestly.
Good point.
Thanks.
Use of employees' personal property at school, do we have that under 3000s?
We. I don't think we have this number.
If we even tried to say we've written a law, like, half the stuff, everybody knows they bring their personal property to, to succeed, they achieve, like, everything, so I don't.
I think it would be smart to have a policy to say that if they choose to bring their personal property and use it in a school, that the district's not responsible for it.
So liability, how about somewhere, though?
It sounds like it should be somewhere.
I don't, it's not this number, but we have it somewhere.
And have it somewhere.
Not so common.
We have a.
We don't know it's here, we're not responsible.
I don't have that one.
So this one is saying that the practice is permitted, but the school board is not responsible for any loss, I think we need to, I mean.
Don't put it in, let's go.
It's fun, oh, no.
Saying, hey, we'll allow it to happen, we're just saying we're not going to be responsible for it if something happens to the property or if it's misused. Oh, and there's a form they're asking to be completed, so if you're bringing your own personal, I think we can.
Delete that.
Delete that, right?
Yeah.
For notification of personal property, no, that, I don't think, I think just that first couple sentences is probably good, right?
First, yeah, I would just say your first two sentences.
The first two sentences. Just to make it simple, to say, hey, that, it's okay to do, but we're just saying we're not going to assume.
Yeah, it starts getting.
Be careful about the last sentence of the first paragraph, except in extraordinary circumstances, the board will provide all employees with equipment tools necessary to perform their assigned duties.
No, I'm just saying, just take sentence one and two.
Okay.
The first two from here, just to, that just says you can do it, but we're just saying we're not going to be responsible for any loss, damage, or misuse of said property.
Yeah, okay, I can, yeah.
I don't think we need to make them fill out a form and have it notified by the board and all that, that is extremely tedious, so.
Yeah. So, there is a practice in place that, like, with our students and stuff, so that's why I'm trying to, I'm trying to scour really quick.
I was also, and I'll tell you, related to personal property.
They do have to fill out a form.
If something happens and you've registered your personal property, and, like, there was a loss, a flooding or something, it protects the employee with their insurance related to that form, that they have proof that they had that where.
So we're, we have this in practice right now, but.
No, I've been in other districts that use this language, and that's what I remember about that form, if you have permission to have your personal property there and it's worth something, and, and you have a form signed that says it's there, and then the facility incurs damage, it protects the employee with their own personal insurance payment.
Right, that makes sense.
But I mean, if we say, the practice is permitted, provided it's understood that the school board is not responsible for any loss, damage, or misuse of said property, I don't, that.
The must, I mean, I.
Does that affect our insurance rates?
It's their insurance, the personal, it's the individual.
It's personal, right, because they have permission from their employer, so it could be an advantage.
Right.
I just hate to do must, because then we're saying, like, every, you know.
Where do you see the word must at, sorry, I'm just shy, if there was sentence one and two.
The one, no, I'm saying, if we talk about the forms.
Must complete their form, so, I don't know, I guess you could put something in there saying, if your personal insurance requires you, you may fill out forms, whatever, yeah, to register that you have permission, if you guys are interested in that, and then it's on them to go research their own insurance coverage to make sure that it would replace.
I think sentence one and two are, is probably the easiest way to go with this, just saying, hey, you can do it, but we're not going to assume the.
Yeah.
I mean.
It would prevent them from getting a form filed with their principal saying, yes, you can have your DVD player or whatever at school.
3D printer, I mean, we're thinking small potatoes, but there could be large things, you know, I'm bringing my.
Car.
Your car?
I mean, seriously, like, you're driving your car, I don't know, hell, whatever.
No, the auto high school will work on your car if you want them to, we left it there and then there was a hurricane.
So back, back to the form, that, that says work-related purposes, if you're bringing on to the district for work-related purposes, you must, the first sentence is if you, if you want to bring it in for your own reasons.
Right.
To use in off-duty time, but that form is, if you're bringing it in to use for work-related purposes, like your 3D printer, because you're going to, you know.
Yeah. Or your, you know, your personal trombone, or your, whatever, you know, I mean.
So you would fill out a form and then we would assume liability for that?
No, it's in order for them to get their insurance.
So if your insurance covers your cello while you're at school teaching, and you leave it there, and it floods, and your cello's ruined, now you can make a claim and say, yes, your employer allowed you to store your cello at work.
Got it.
And so your, your insurance might require that form.
Sounds like extra work.
Nowadays, I'm just thinking, like, how much insurance, like, I don't know, some policies, you know, it's your personal property, even if you're.
And then where it's at.
Right. I vote for, let's not put it in there.
First two sentences.
Yeah, first two sentences.
There we go.
First two sentences is what we're going with, okay, good, that's.
I did borrow cello one year, it was horrible.
Did you ruin it?
No, I was trying to play it to learn it, and it was horrible.
The cello is not horrible, I think if I had been years, let's just clarify.
All the cello's small.
It was the worst cello ever.
It was people inside.
The Indian, the Euro.
Okay, anti-harassment we have in the 3000s.
Okay, threatening behavior towards staff members.
We have that in the 3000s.
Administrative salary.
We have compensation in 3000s.
Okay. Group health plan.
We have benefits.
Gotta be some of that.
We have benefits in the 3000s.
All the other ones go all the way down to 14s, like.
Okay.
Yeah, don't even go there.
We, all right.
We have a leave of absence.
Benefits, 1420, leave of absence, I'm sure is.
So our next policy that we have is 1431, which is.
We're getting there.
I know, so these are all.
All these are sickly, personal leave, injury, in line of duty.
All of these are covered, they're all in here.
So absence of administrators.
Yeah, jury witness, yep, so we just go straight to it, absence of administrators.
Yeah, these are all covered in here.
All right, so we're up to 1431.
This one's. This one's very simple, it hasn't changed in 20 something years, so.
We do, we're good, standard.
We just need to mark it.
Review, good, concur, all right, and then we have.
Grievance procedure.
Job-related expenses, that's somewhere else, right? Travel, later, okay.
But that doesn't cover all job-related expenses, so.
Travel doesn't?
It wouldn't cover everything, would it, I mean, what if a teacher needs to buy, I don't know, I'm just thinking something to their class that they need to be reimbursed for, not a travel expense, would that?
All the school accounting rules would cover that, so, permission to utilize school funds, a purchase order, following the contracted people, all that stuff would apply, and then we have CSAP where there, that's a statutory reimbursement that teachers get.
Okay.
Trying to think if there's anything else that they would use their money to buy something.
I just scanned the whole thing, and I know that there is a process for pretty much any of these things that are inside here, for them to utilize.
Yeah, I think that's more of a, it's almost like more of a procedure.
Yeah, and it stops you from using.
I do like, and I have something I've had come up recently, if you look at that bottom, I only know it because it came to me in a contract from a school, accrual of personal benefits such as miles and everything, that came up, and I said, I told them, no, they cannot accrue personal stuff because the district's paying for it, so, it has come up, I'm just letting you know recently, so I don't know if you want to consider just a simple addition to one of our other policies of that line.
Got it.
Somewhere, because it has been an issue recently on two different contracts.
Okay.
All right, well, then, if it's come up twice recently, we need to add it.
Can we find a place where that fits?
That's what I'm saying, we can look at where we have those other, like, travel-related things and put in there that you cannot accrue personal benefits for that.
Okay.
It's interesting, this policy does not address every issue, exception, or contingency that may arise in the course of travels, in other words, this isn't all.
All right, so we're out to the next one.
So we're not adding this, but we want to make sure we add this language.
I wrote it in the three thousand. I wrote it in the free notice.
You've ever seen Paul's notes, it's duly noted, I promise you.
Okay.
The man writes, "So perfectly and small."
He's been all those.
I looked at it the other day and I said, oh my gosh, he writes all, it's incredible.
Okay, we have grievance procedures, also 20 years old and has not changed, except for it says-
It just wants to put it in the human resources procedures manual, and I don't know if we have to have that, if we do have that, what is that? Do you have one of those? Do we need to have one now because it's referencing statute?
We haven't, we have, ours is in the procedures and we have an administrative procedure for grievance.
Right, and I, and I'm okay with doing that as long as it's statutory by law.
Would it, it has not been revised since 2004, so would it be good, just to make sure that's actually what we're doing?
Yep.
For the grievance procedure?
Yeah, for-
Well, Neola hasn't been revised since 2002.
I know, there's Neola.
Well, and we have griev-, so we do have a grievance procedure and it says, see your, your contracts.
Yeah, but she probably added the, the CFR there, that's probably her modification.
So-
Do we need to add the CFR?
And they, no, she, I can tell you, she added 6819 and the CFR, because those are not on her.
Do we need to add those?
I would recommend updating.
Um, and just, because that would get eyes on griev-, I know grievance procedures for the, for the employee eligible unions are going to be determined by the contract, but administrators, this may be absolutely what y'all are doing, but can we just do eyes on the administrative procedure while we're at it?
Yep, so the next one, remote work, there's a process going on right now, uh, we don't have it in statute or in our policies, but I think that there's a couple of, uh, works in progress, testing, isn't there, isn't there a department that's working on a pilot for remote working right now?
Tammy.
Tammy.
Don't say Tammy, or we can, education technology. And to be honest with you, we have a significant amount of other individuals that are on the fence of leaving us for many contract, um, many of our, our aerospace and, and other areas that are all on remote, so I think that, I don't know if you guys want to-
I think it's something we need to entertain, honestly, there are certain positions that would, that would, this would work for.
It's like I've been saying this for two years.
We are.
It's, it's like a, it's like a nod in the cultural, it's got to have be a conversation that we have, or we're never going to retain staff in certain departments.
Carol's nodding your head back there, so.
What I was, what I was going to say is, is this is kind of a bigger, like, this is direction from staff on a plan moving forward in policy because they're thinking about, is that, am I appropriate by saying that?
Yes, it would be wonderful to put a board policy on remote work.
Okay.
But-
She's in favor.
I will say this, though, I don't know, because we've been doing all these policies that apply to, not necessarily administration, but employees, I'm not saying we, let me, go ahead and this is, if this is our priority, why don't we go ahead and make this one, like, elevate this, because the ones that we're just adding statutes, you know, whatever, but this might be a 3,000s, and I'm going to guess that Neola has a 3,000s, because we're, some of our remote work is not in teachers, it's going to be-
Right.
-people who can code from home, people who can, you know, whatever, or even, you know, some of your staff, uh, facilities, if they could go from their home to the site rather than coming here and then out.
Here and then going there, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just for-
Mr. Tiedem said people have gotten up in the middle of an interview and walk out because they, they say, can I work remote, and they say, no, I'm out.
I, I deal with it.
So this is priority, let's, let's do this, but I don't know that 15, it needs to be in the 3,000s, let's be-
It sounds like it probably shouldn't be in the 3,000s.
So why don't we do this, this is what I was trying to get at, why don't we say, because I've now, I was moving around last week with some of our administrators, and they were screaming about this, that they're so excited that Mr. Tiedem's looking forward, how about we ask staff to bring us something back that they think is appropriate? Can we do that so that we can show the staff members that are currently here that were moving in that direction, because there's a lot of them that are looking at summer employment?
Yeah, so can we, can we fast track this one? But again, 1,500 or 3,500, wherever Neola uses it, I think, I, to me, it belongs in the 3,000s.
I agree.
I agree.
The remaining ones of, of these are, um, they're in the 3,000s already.
Yep, they all are.
The personnel file, job descriptions, we have, we have, do we have one more policy on our list?
I know.
Great, 1470 was our last one?
Yep, so we're good on that, um, so we have everything taken care of as, uh-
Oh wait, what about complaints against administrators?
That's, that's in the, uh-
It's complaints against staff, we have that, though.
Okay, and we just addressed that, great.
So I am, uh, we've got a couple of things to go, you know, do you have any questions on any of the policies, directions, or anything like that?
If you pass whatever that is around, please.
This right here?
Yes.
Snack!
This is Paul's, I just went and stole it.
Oh!
He got it for his birthday and asked him to eat it.
I will go dig in my-
Those are all fresh, those are all, just been refreshed last week, so.
I got walnuts and all that.
I just need, like-
Listen, don't be advertising of staff.
Three cashews, just for blessed.
Like a three pound bag, I would never be able to get it.
It's going to tie her up.
So does anybody else have anything for the good of the group?
Uh, yeah, I, I do, I, I have something, and this is not something to take action on, obviously, we're in a workshop, but I, I do want to throw out there, uh, given the recent circumstances to consider. Um, I was pretty vocal when we talked about the reorganization that was presented to us, about my hesitation for certain reasons, and that reorganization has now been put into practice, and I still have my same concerns, but they've developed because it's been put into practice. One of the things that really bothered me about that reorg was not only the visual of it, um, but, again, how it affected the staff when it was implemented. I am concerned that we took the three largest departments that are closest to our students and removed them away from the direct contact with the superintendent, at least visually, also in practice. So elementary leading and learning, secondary leading and learning, and student services were removed and put under, um, the deputy superintendent. I would like us to consider having conversations with staff, thinking about whether or not that was really a good decision, um, because visually and in practice, it, it felt disrespectful, um, and almost like, um, a demotion to certain staff members who were dedicated for over 25-plus years to this district, uh, and I don't think that was in the best interest of our staff and our students. Given what we've all learned and experienced, I just ask for you to at least take the opportunity to discuss with people how they feel it's going, if it adds value to the district, uh, and if we should continue that practice, but I also would like to say, if, if we all feel a collective, let's have a conversation, to throw that in the hands of Ms. Hahn as well, to say, you take some time to think about that and develop and ask questions and maybe report back to us what you think is in the best interest of the district regarding that position in reorg. Um, and I just, I would like you guys to at least entertain thinking about that for a little bit.
Before, I, I want Sue to speak this, but before we do that, and I, I have to slow my own roll for a second, because we've talked several times today as if certain things are already settled and they're not, um, so probably be very careful, um, because Sue is acting, we still have someone under contract, and his board has not made a decision as where we're going, moving forward. I think we might already all have an idea of where we're going to be going moving forward, but we have not voted, so we have to be careful. Um, but I would like to, so I'm going to back myself up because there's a couple of times when we've talked about through May, through May, or whatever, but we, we don't have a decision on that, um, so, but with that being said, in the interim, do you have any, you have, in the less than, you know, 36 hours, do you have any insight for us?
I do. We, um, I spent some time talking to our staff yesterday, individually and collectively, and I think the concept has merit, I think the implementation created a lot of, um, a lot of confusion as to who had what authority to do, to do what, and so I would like to give it a try as it is, I think, on all of the parties involved, see the benefit of the leading and marrying team collaborating with the, um, student services team, and I think having someone who is looking at it holistically makes some sense. We have several projects, such as the ALCs, the Gardendale, things that the board has charged us with making a look at that cross those boundaries, and so, um, having a person that is looking at that across those boundaries and also charged with communicating respectfully and well with the folks that are working directly with the principals, I think we're fine. I, I felt like I talked to everybody involved yesterday and everyone is willing to just hit the ground running and let's get the job done, and so I'm, I think we should give this an opportunity, that will give you an opportunity to bring in a permanent superintendent who can then evaluate the merits of the, of the plan in its, in a way that it has been executed a little differently than the original start. That, that would be my two cents on the matter.
And I appreciate that, the one thing I would like us to consider, though, even at a minimum, is, is the visual of it, um, because you can't always guarantee who's going to be in certain roles, and right now we have an interim in one of the roles, right? And so, and we can't always guarantee that someone like you will be sitting there having those conversations and directing them in a certain way, and so my concern is, we had an issue because the people were different, and it makes me uncomfortable to leave staff in a position where that could potentially happen again, um, so I just, I wanted to put it out there, but I, I hear you and I appreciate it.
I guess I had a different take from the beginning, and again, I think the implement, I appreciate what you said, um, so thank you very much, because I, the, to me, the implementation was, was, in a lot of things, has been really the, the issue more than the idea, because Dr. Mullins himself was considering, um, a, a chief academic officer, and in, in a way, what that does, because someone from the community approached me, you're demoting our main thing, I'm like, well, except that, we've all, whenever we've had a deputy, and from my history, Dr. Thetty was the deputy, she was in HR, before her, Dr. Mullins was a deputy, he was COO, and she was the COO, um, she was a deputy, before she became HR, she was COO, so she was a deputy, so the deputy moved with the person, but the deputy had not been an academic person, which is our chief mission, and so the idea was to have that, it, it was almost elevating it, um, but I hear something about the communication, I think a lot of that had to do with implementation, so I appreciate that, and I, you know, it's something that, um, you guys can do effectively and more effectively and efficiently, hopefully, and, um, and then, again, moving forward, um, we can give direction to the new superintendent as to the priorities and what we'd like to see and how the plan will be implemented.
I, I agree, thank you for your perspective on that. When that was presented to us, I didn't take that as a negative thing, I took that as somebody, an additional support that's going to help those three categories, because when you look at the superintendent's role and how that structure goes, you have all of these things that are falling underneath of the superintendent, so it's so broad, right? So this helps narrow in one person that's like, hey, I'm going to, you know, focus on these three specific categories, uh, and make sure that we're doing the best that we possibly can for those, for students, and then relay that back to the superintendent on how we're going to help. I appreciate your perspective on it, because I do think there is value to that, I think it could work, I think the implementation of how it was handled was, could have been done a little differently, um, so that it didn't, didn't feel as though a demotion or negative, that this is actually an additional support to help those three, you know, leading and learning for elementary, secondary, and the ESE, um, so I, I'm hopeful that moving forward with the team that we have in place, that it will be a different scenario, that it won't feel like a demotion, and they're not removed from, from the superintendent or access there, um, so I appreciate your perspective on that.
Yeah, I'm more of an out type person, and they're, they're here now, the situation is, and we're so close to the finish line on that, and, uh, I believe it's, I've kind of been involved a little bit in all that's being set up and from afar, and it looks like it's working, regardless of how it was introduced, um, I think we are fortunate to have Dr. Cody in that position, uh, I mean, I think we're, we really found something there, and, uh, you know, she's not sticking around, she knows that, um, that's her telling us that, so, uh, I look forward to seeing what comes of that situation, uh, you would have expressed that there, you have urged them to work collaboratively on the ALC and the Gardendale project, um, they've invested time there, so, um, yeah, I, I like where you're going with that, so.
So-
And right now, sorry, I did jump in there, right now, with Sue's area of expertise, not necessarily being the academic side of the house-
Yeah.
She's probably supportive of how much assistance she can give.
Personal help is good.
I, I, I am always open and honest and transparent, I feel the need to say this here, um, and again, there's, you're sitting here, so it's different. The roles and responsibility that were given to that individual were not necessarily the roles and responsibility of that position we hired them for, and I think it needs to be clear what the role and responsibility of that position truly is, because there wasn't necessarily that collaboration going around on, and it was a totally different focus of evaluating departments' suggestions, I'll say, um, and so I think that needs to be really, really clear going forward.
So Ms. Jenkins, I truly appreciate your, your points, um, I think the collaboration in many ways was disrupted based upon that, right? We even know that now, um, my angle on this whole thing is whoever the superintendent is or interim or makes those decisions on their org chart based on the personal direct, like, you may not have academics, so you may need support there, so reorgs are going to depend on the positives and negatives and everything else, so whereas I, I hear Ms. Jenkins saying, and, and adamantly agree with her, um, the ultimate decision is yours and however you feel fit to move forward and as the acting is the way we should go. So I appreciate you and thank you very much.
And, and Sue, I totally trust your opinion, um, and, and recognize that there's somebody else sitting in that seat right now, I just think it was really important to be said out loud and in front of other board members, um, because it is something that you will be paying attention to, and, you know, you could change your opinion going forward, and I don't want that to come out of nowhere, so.
And I, and I think that the, the purpose behind it, I think, was not the way that it was enacted, and I agree that there's, that's what the issue is, right? So I think that it has merit, just like you said, it's just that the way that it was implemented was wrong, and I hear Ms. Jenkins, and I think you have direction that if we did need to move in any direction, we would support it.
Yeah.
So with that, does anybody else have anything? I have one more item that just came along.
Just on that, I'll say, I have seen boards that do approve org charts, it doesn't prohibit super making changes, but it makes it so that any changes have to go be approved by the board before implementation, so.
Yeah, we had a, we had a, I'll be honest with you guys, there was an instance where procurement had been moved while without board approval under the CFO, many of you guys may or may not have known that, there was an email that went out early March, we didn't approve it, which I think Paul was saying, we didn't have the ability to.
It's just not in your policies, and historically, the board has not voted to approve the org chart, so it's kind of one of those where the team's always had the ability, you just need to-
The issue, though, is, is that the budget changes, which is under ours, the property that is transferred is under ours, the staff descriptions, the job descriptions are under our purview, so all of those needed to be moved over, so changing it on paper is one thing, but the actual physical implementation to do so should have come before the board, and I just wanted to let everybody know, one of the reasons that that was, shouldn't have happened, and had it had board discussion, it wouldn't have, is because, uh, years ago we had a software situation, and what had happened is the CFO had utilized the procurement department as a leverage to get that contract through, so RSM audited it and said it needed to be separated, and I don't think that, um, Dr. Schiller was doing anything inappropriate, I think he just truly believed that alignment worked, but had he had the discussion, we could have avoided that.
I had asked him last week, I didn't realize he'd already done it, I, I-
Oh yeah, you sent him an email, Mark, so.
-last week to check into RSM first because of that, because I'd heard about that, yeah.
We had, we had staff that was spending up to a week trying to type what their plan was to move to that direction, because they had already been given that designation earlier, so it was, so it was causing a little bit of disruption, so I think that in the event, in the future, I think that we should approve the realignments of departments, I mean, that, that's pretty big, because of the other components that it has, property, budget, staff, job descriptions.
No, I, here's the thing, we're, you know, we have to, we have to create policy based on what's, that's not past practice, but I will tell you, past practice, you know, in, in the last several years, we had the benefits department that had been under the CFO, and they got moved under human resources, and part of that had to do with the people who were in those places, but the superintendent at the time, he, he came to each of us and said, this is what I'm doing, this is why I'm going to do it, we didn't have to vote on it, but there was just an awareness, and if we felt like there were going to be pushback, he was, he would, would ask for our feedback, I don't know, you know, you know, do we have to put it in policy to make sure that it comes before us, or do we have to put it into practice that it, we have to vote on every change?
I would say-
We need to decide that.
If we wrapped it into the job description, and, and just so you know, moving out of, underneath was not only because of personnel, but there was a, um, piggyback that switched the carrier, the consultant for us, like, overnight, there was a bunch of stuff that was going on that that made more appropriate sense to put it under HR, but I would say, because it's tied to all those other things, that even if, that it should be a package, right, like, if you're going to change procurement to go under the CFO, then you should say, okay, we're going to do this, and then have all of the job descriptions that need to be changed, all of the budgetary, like, this is the portions of it to go under, because it wasn't only procurement under the CFO, I think there were some other movements.
I feel like I need to say that the losing benefits is now back under the CFO, so that, that happened in the last few months.
That happened in the last few months, and it started with the, prior to Dr. Mullins leaving, uh, the discussion between Dr. Thetty and Ms. Losinski, um, about moving it, um, and then Dr. Schiller enacted it.
We did talk about that at cabinet yesterday, and everyone is on board that that is a good decision, so there's, there's no issue with it that I'm aware of, I think everyone who was affected agreed that that was the appropriate place for that.
There was some other departments that may or may not have moved under Rashad into different places, so in the event, like, one of the things I wanted to do was bring it up, and thank you for doing that, is to give, um, Ms. Sue an opportunity that we don't need to approve to go, like, evaluate it and just say, this is what happened, can we, if you can do that, and sort of rectify all that stuff that happened.
So for example, the procurement, the procurement example specifically, we've walked that back, um, because we have not done any documentation on the budget side or the HR side, so there were some HR implications, and in that case, there probably would have been job description changes and, and other things, so, um, that one has just been walked back and it is as it was, so, um, there's a handful of others, I think some of those are individuals that have been assigned, and some of those, I think, went to the board, so I haven't quite gotten down to that, I don't have to do this to look at yet, but, um-
Basically taking an overview of the, um, superintendent attorney, bringing it back to being the-
Oh, that one, yeah, I've got-
See what I mean, like, all of those, if you can look at those, that was all I wanted to open the door for.
So, this just, this just came to me, sorry, this is, sorry to interject, it just, I had a, oh my god, I gotta say this out loud for a relief moment. There's a lot of holes in what I'm about to take, because I don't have enough information when it was thrown at me, so, from what I unders-, what I was told, I don't know if it's true or not, that there was a directive for district staff to spend a significant was a directive for district staff to spend a significant amount of their responsibility outside of the district responsibilities into school buildings.
That's been rescinded.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Cody, you're.
I know that that was a significant concern, and their jobs weren't getting done here. Thank you.
Yeah, and just so everybody understands, if they're listening.
Yeah, yeah, I had just heard about it yesterday.
Did you get included on the email for some reason?
I did not get included on the email, exactly.
So district staff was told inside of ESF that they had to spend ninety percent of their time.
The directors.
Inside the schools. Well, the problem is, is that a lot of.
They weren't getting their jobs done here.
Right, there's a lot of, like, from athletics, he's supposed to set up the schedules for next year, which were not happening, there was a lot of stuff that was falling, because everybody was moving towards a different direction. So thank you for rescinding that. I would say, everybody, to be serious to this, with some of the things that we've heard, if we can email Sue and just say, hey, just checking to make sure, even though you may have it on your radar, there are some things that have surfaced over the last, like, two to three days that I think would be pertinent to communicate to Sue.
They're right near the top.
Yeah, and, and take care of that, and then also, if there's anybody that's making accusations over what was happening, like, this is happening to me and stuff, direct those to Sue, like, just funnel them off.
So you guys are in his pod, too?
Well, and you can, you can disseminate it to who you want, but we need to.
All the super, my policies should come to me.
Okay, there we go, so everything goes to you.
I'll take that off, Sue.
So then it goes to you, so I think.
Happy birthday.
And then if it has anything to do with the, you know, job descriptions or whatever, if you can communicate.
The job descriptions could go to Carol.
Well, we'll just go to you, and you can funnel it to where you need.
The allegations, complaints.
He asked for it, he raised his hand.
I said, complaints.
We're like, send it all to Paul.
No, he just raised his hand, everything that has to do with any kind, we go to Paul, Paul will disseminate from there.
Yeah, I think the distinction is, if it's, if it's an allegation of something against the super.
That was done wrong against the super, it's always by policy, come to me.
If it's an operational, somebody got reassigned or something like that, that sounds wrong, if any of you, just let me know.
And if you guys can, if that rises to the level of something that needs to be investigated, then please add that to the investigation. The other thing is, is that I wanted to bring up this, Paul brought this to me, it's a letter that is going to go to Dr. Schiller in relation to his administrative, like, structure on administrative leave, and the only question, everything in here is like standard, but the only question is, is that he asked me, do we want him to be able to communicate with board members and board members to be able to communicate within Wally's on that been leave, or not? That's all, it doesn't matter which way we go, I.
Paul is asking, or Schiller's asking?
Paul is asking direction.
Send the letter, yeah.
I'm saying, I think that that's probably a bad idea for board members to communicate with them, I think that's.
Considering that we might be.
I think it's a bad idea, I think it's an out idea, I guess.
So I would agree with you, and that's where I was going to go, so I don't.
With any board member, so he just needs to communicate directly with Paul?
Directly with Paul, because of the litigation, the possibilities and stuff like that.
Are we going to see the letter before it goes out?
Absolutely, if you want to see it right now, it's pretty simple, it's not, it's just.
I mean, you don't have to literally.
No, no, I want, I want direction to be sent now, before we leave, because we don't have enough.
Sorry, sorry, I look like a stack. I was like, can we read that, please?
While we're passing that around, I, I don't want to hand tie anybody, but can we make it a commitment as a board, addressing what I addressed at the beginning, to take it easy on staff with our own demands and priorities and, and keep, we have so many number ones that we try to.
Whoa, and I think you're right, if you look at our current policies, right, that we're trying to review, you look at our budgetary process that we're trying to do, I think that there's so much on our hands right now.
We got a lot, yeah.
And that's our top things. I think little things that we, we can't wait sixty days, I think, you know, like, I feel very confident that that direction is correct, Ms. Campbell, and I appreciate you bringing that up.
Yeah.
You got anything else you want us to send to you? Like, you want to say, all this goes to me, too? Y'all just keep sending it?
Yeah, we need to.
We all need to look at the letter and say.
And give you some direction before we close out.
Is, is this the time?
I'm okay with the letter.
You talked about litigation, is.
We can't talk about litigation right now.
Right. I don't have any, so.
So the main thing you want is to the yellow.
Maybe my question's not even able to be answered.
Is it okay, you guys, just, I'm okay with any individual board member making additions or subtractions, I would, this is kind of one of those things I would rather just.
Yeah, I'm fine, with the yellow, for any reason, meeting or other work late, are you asking for?
Yeah, that's, the normal is, they have to be available between those hours.
Because they're still on the clock for us.
Right, they're still getting paid, they're getting all their benefits and everything.
And I would like it to be said that we, as a board, need to say that, that all of our employees are innocent, full of guilty. So we need to go with that as a, as a constant here, because this is somebody's, you know what I mean, livelihood, so, that's it. Paul, you have direction, do you want to show that to?
Can I ask one question about the investigation? I'm not sure. What is the typical turnaround time for the investigation? Because that's what I'm just not clear on, how.
Depends on what the allegations are.
We're compiling, we're compiling the investigative pieces now.
Okay.
Hoping that if you guys have something that you need to add to it, and then, there's been a couple that have already, you know what I mean, been a part of it, but there are a couple that are adding.
Okay.
And when do we know about this?
So, I know.
Because I got, like, I don't know what you're talking about.
You should go to Paul with anything that you have a concern with, and Paul will then communicate that with the investigative attorney.
This is an addition to the whistleblowing.
Yes, it cannot be the same.
It's not good here.
No, I'm just, I'm sorry, I just need a little clearer. I won't go there, but, is, yeah, is there something that's already happening that we don't know about yet? Talk to Paul, yeah, I'm just confused.
He hesitated.
Paul, you want to?
I just don't know what everybody knows, so, I mean, I can't really answer that question.
Got it, okay.
There are some things that are statutorily confidential.
That you can't share.
Yeah, that I cannot share.
Okay.
So if you have any concerns that you've heard, please express them to Mr. Paul, and Mr. Paul can check to see if that can be added, and then he can add it to it, and then the turnaround time depends on what exactly gets sent, and I think after all of us get with them, then he can set that scope of the investigative.
Okay, fair enough.
All right, is everybody else okay? Ms. Sue, you have something?
I just wanted to let everybody know, I will have additions and subtractions for April eleventh of the work session and the board meeting, so there's some things that have come up and things that didn't, like, we're going to do like work, so I just, please be.
One of the things was, they put the dress code policy right on, and I think we had talked about, we wanted to get a little feedback before that came back to us, so that, which is fifty-one.
Twenty.
Fifty-two, eleven, or.
It had two and a one in there.
Yeah, the dress code policy.
If we can.
Mix it around. If, if, we, we gave the direction, we wanted some feedback from our principals, that might not happen in a timely manner before.
But just be clear, just because we're asking feedback from administration and principals, they're not changing policy.
Right, 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 but we wanted that feedback before we start.
Media specialists.
Right, we want that feedback before we start making changes, so.
Well, so what are you suggesting?
Well, I, I was looking at it last night and going, okay, what's on our, because it got released to us, and we've got some of those things on there, I don't know that we had, I know, because it moved, it moved to the next level, the next stage of workshop.
Right, it's already advertised, so that's why it's doing that.
Oh, so we can take it off.
If you want me to pull it, I can pull it.
Well, but wait a minute, because we can do, we can gather that information in the, in the process, once it goes to workshop and we come back for, I mean.
This was your, the last time you guys viewed it on Tuesday.
Yeah.
That was your chance to make changes, you make changes, that the next, it's off.
But then it does, when it goes off.
It's not an issue, I'm just letting you know where it is.
And understand that if it's off, it just gets reset to the next, it's, it's okay, it's already been.
We got readvertised, yeah.
I hear you, Ms. Campbell.
I just wanted that one to be a work session on that one, because I feel like we were waiting for.
I think we can, and if we make any changes, then it just literally delays one meeting, that's it, which I think is within the scope, and I think can give us the feedback.
That's right.
Thank you for that clarification.
I didn't want it to be unedited.
No, absolutely.